Call this meeting is Tacoma Park City to counsel the order. The clerk please call the roll.
Mayor Williams?
I'm here.
Councilmember Wright?
Here.
Councilmember Clay?
Here.
Councilmember Robinson? Councilmember Siemens?
Present.
Councilmember Sniffer?
Here.
Councilmember Schultz?
Here.
And Councilmember Robinson will be here. He has, he is in the process of flying in from California. He was in Chicago mid-afternoon. He will be here. All right. Good timing. Excellent presentation.
We were just saying you'd be here momentarily. Just stay here.
So you're just, yeah, just holler out here. Okay. I just wanted to note that the original published agenda for this meeting was shifted around to accommodate the SHA road transfer discussion, and most items that had been on the agenda were removed from this evening's agenda and shifted to later meetings. So we will make sense of the scramble that that caused, and the rolling agenda will get back in order tomorrow. So I don't particularly want to talk about any upcoming items, other than to say that the council will continue to meet through November, and after November 29th, we will go on our December recess. At this point, we have the public comment period, and this is the time for anybody who wishes to say anything that is not on our agenda this evening. So if you have any comments about anything on our agenda, please hold those. This is a time for anything not on the agenda. Mr. Lovelace.
Yeah, I am Matt Lovelace, 7644 Avenue, Tacoma Park Avenue. Your peace delegate. I want to thank you people for moving the council comments up to the front of the meeting where it should be. A lot of people, like I said before, at nighttime, they're all curled up by the edge of the day, and they don't get to hear it. I'm glad to see you've done that. Thank you very much. And also, I want to thank the people out there that came out and voted. You know, even though us Democrats, we took a shellacking, we took a whaling on the votes throughout the country, I noticed. You know, in the Congress and stuff, we took a whaling. But I think, you know, that Tacoma Park and the surrounding areas, at least we kept our governor. That's good. At least we kept our governor. And I'm glad to see people came out to vote. And also, I got one question. I was thinking about for the last couple of weeks on your, on your getting a permit to bury dead animals on your agenda, like getting rid of the nuisance parts of the code. I got a question. If somebody wanted, if some family had a pet cat or a pet dog, if nipping a cat dies, do they have to get a permit to bury him in the city or not? I didn't know about that. And a lot of people don't know about that, where they have to get a permit to bury their kitty cat. But I hope not, because, you know, I'm sure a lot of people have done it. And I want to thank you people very much for all the support you've given us, and a lot of the help getting back and forth in the polls you've done. You know, Terry's done a lot of that, and I want to thank him very much. And also, far as selling 410, forget it.
We'll take comments on that later.
But anyway, I just want to thank everybody for coming out to vote. Because it's a very important thing, you know. People have got to realize it's not only just a right, but it's a responsibility to get up there and vote. Like I said before, you can't complain if you didn't vote. If you voted, you've got all the right to come out and complain when the Republicans take over the Democrats and give us a whaling like this. You've got a right to complain if you voted. If you didn't vote, then you've got problems on your hands. Thank you very much for voting. And thank you for changing the public comments, the council comments, up to the front. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else want to make any comments? Come on up, come on up to the podium.
He doesn't know what old is.
And while Mr. Daniels is coming down, we'll just remind everybody that we ask you to keep your comments to three minutes. And you'll hear, you've got full access to what's going on up there on the podium.
I'd like to echo Pat's sentiment on thanking everybody for voting. The turnout in the city was excellent, as it normally is. I am a precinct chair of one of the precincts, and I also would like to thank Councilmember Siemens, as he always does, for bringing citizens to the polls to vote at 1321, which is Tacoma Park Middle School. And certainly thank the city, too, for their efforts in getting citizens to the polls to vote. Again, thank you very much.
I'm Catherine Wakeland. I live at 7218 Holly Avenue. And all I'd like to do is to say that Sammy Abbott would be proud tonight. Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay. Then we will move to council comments. Councilmember Clay?
I just wanted to thank everybody who came out to my Halloween party the last Saturday night, including the band of middle schoolers, Ladle Fight, played in the neighborhood. All the neighbors really loved it, had a few dozen teenagers there, I think maybe 50 teenagers and about that many adults, and had a great party for everyone. And I, it was a really great community event for our neighborhood, and hope that I can do it next year again, maybe have two bands. Thank you.
Councilmember Siemens?
Thank you. I'd just like to also thank Mayor Williams for moving the council comments back to the beginning of the meeting. And to keep it brief, I will end there. Thank you.
Councilmember Robinson?
Yeah, we're on, we're on a kind of a tight timeline now. We've got the council comments at the beginning, but we're going to be very concise. I just came back from Arizona, and I just want to say that there aren't a bunch of nuts out there. The state's not full of a bunch of nuts. There are a good many very sane and wonderful people there. And I went to a brother's wedding, and was very lucky to have fallen into a conversation with the Justice of the Peace's husband, who's a commissioner for Santa Cruz County, which is the lower county in Arizona. Had a very nice conversation with him, felt like he was a kindred spirit. So I bring greetings from Arizona.
Councilmember Schultz?
I want to thank the mayor for moving the public city council comments to the front of the agenda, and we have all learned our lesson. We realized we needed to go through this disciplinary process. And I will do everything I can to contain myself, although it's not easy to three minutes. Just one question that I want to raise. I know that this is a matter that the city police department has been considering, and that is the question of being able to install video cameras on public areas in certain commercial districts. I know that the, some of the city staff visited the city of Hyattsville a month or two ago to learn what their experience has been and all that. And I'd be curious to know, not, not tonight necessarily, what sort of progress staff is making in regard to that, because I think it's something that will help, help the commercial district along New Hampshire Avenue and some of the other heavily commercialized streets in our city. That's all I needed to say. Thank you.
Councilmember Wright?
Thank you. Two items. First, I wanted to apologize to my constituents. I don't want to go into the details of 410, because we're going to talk about that tonight, but just to say that I had an error in judgment and misjudged how important this issue was to the community. And it was on the agenda a number of times, and usually that brings people out when there's an item on the agenda and it's of concern to people. But I definitely, based on everything we'd heard, didn't think it was as big an issue as it was, and clearly it has been. So I apologize for that error in judgment. I appreciate all the input that I've gotten, both through email and by phone and over coffees over the last week or so. And I look forward to having a healthy discussion about the issue tonight. My second issue is that the large buses on Maple continue. So I really like us to redouble our efforts on that front. The last we heard from the county was that they started to give, use more smaller buses, and then there was a fire on one of the buses, and they had to do some sort of investigation. So if we could, again, check with them to see where we are and making progress on that issue, and I will again email Councilmember Urban's office.
And I just wanted to note that there's a park dedication coming up this Sunday, November 14th, at 1:00. We're going to be dedicating Bell Ziegler Park at what was formerly Jackie Park. And there'll be a short program and the unveiling of a plaque, which will explain the history of the park and the various names it's had. So anybody who uses that park has noticed the name change, but we'll have the plaque, and this will be a formal honoring of Bell Ziegler. Also, I wanted to note that Tacoma Park resident Billy Coulter and his band will be playing here as part of the We Are Tacoma series next Friday, November 19th, at 8:00, and that program is free. So if anybody wants to hear good music by a Tacoma Park resident, come on out to that event. And I think that's all the council comments we have. Does the city manager have any comments?
Two, two brief items this evening. I wanted to let the council know that I received notification today from FEMA that we will receive, excuse me, $92,125 in reimbursement for the February storms. We had budgeted $50,000, so we'll actually have more money coming in than we had anticipated. And then the second item, brought up to the public works facility, you may recall, a couple of weeks ago, I had indicated that we were going to approach the contractor about asking for an additional time extension on executing the option for bid alternate one, which was the renovation of the mechanic bay. The contractor has agreed to another 30-day extension of that timeframe, which should take us into mid to late December, which should give us a better sense of how much the site work is going to cost and if there's any problems. So I'll keep you posted as the project continues. And in response to Councilmember Schultz's question about surveillance cameras, I have quite a bit of information on my desk. I just need to compile it and get that out to you, and I hope to do so no later than the beginning of next week.
I see no rush. I just, I don't want you, I know you've got a lot on your plate, but thank you.
Okay. That's it.
That's it. Okay. Then we will move to the first item on our agenda. And I just wanted to lay out for folks how we're going to do this, and make sure that you've got the information that you need. I know we're a little bit ahead of our 8:00 advertised start, but I think we can get going. There may be some people who are rolling in, and that's okay. Make sure if you want to speak, and you've come into the room and missed the sign-up sheet at the back of the room, that you go ahead and sign up. It makes it much easier for us to keep track of who has spoken and what your information is for the record. And it also makes it easier so that everybody doesn't have to kind of snake down the aisle and line up to speak. I'll just let people know who has signed up to speak, and mention a couple of names at the beginning, so that you'll know that you're coming up next. I'll just mention that I'd like to make some opening comments, then we'll hear if she gets here from Delegate Mazir. I also note that Delegate Tom Hucker is here. Then the deputy city manager will make some additional comments and provide some information. We will be joined by State Highway Administrator Neil Peterson, and he will be coming in, hopefully shortly. Oh, he's here? Okay, he just came in. And he'll be, he's here along with the Assistant District Engineer Kate Mazara. And they'll have a chance to make a few comments. And Delegate Mazir has just walked in, so we're getting all our players in the room. Then we'll go to council comments and questions for staff and the presenters, then we'll have public comment. And if I can just note that for public comment, since there'll be a number of people who probably will want to be speaking, we will hold to the three-minute rule for your comments. And when you come up to the podium, you'll notice that there's a, that's a timer and lights there, and so you'll see as your, as your three minutes go down, you'll have the timer in front of you. At 30 seconds out, one single beep will sound, so that's kind of your, just your verbal cue to remember to try and wrap up your comments. And at the, at the end of the three minutes, the beep will sound and continue to go. So we'd ask you to wrap up your comments. You'll also note, if you're particularly tall or particularly short, that there is a button, kind of where your left hand falls, on the edge of the podium there. The podium goes up and down, so if you'd be more comfortable with it at a different height, it'll raise or lower, I think about eight inches. So feel free, feel free to avail yourself of that. I'll remind folks that this is all being broadcast live, and it will be archived on the web, so that if you decide that you want to, you've made your comments and you want to leave and go home, but you want to know what else happened, you can always see it. And also, if anybody wants to avail themselves of the opportunity, we have the Azalea Room, which is across the atrium, set up with a large screen showing what's going on in here. So if anybody wants to head out to another room for a little while, or if anybody comes with kids and they get a little obstreperous and you want to head over to the other room and wait your turn to speak, we have that available as well. So I think we're pretty much ready. After the public comment period, then the council will discuss and maybe pose various questions for people and address, try and address any questions that have been raised in the public comment period, and then we'll figure out where we go from here. So at this point, I'd just like to make some opening remarks. First, let me say that the city council has never wanted to do anything that would allow or encourage the widening of any state highways in the city of Tacoma Park. We have a long history in Tacoma Park of resisting the addition of new roads, the widening of roads, or anything else that would change the character of our community. When there were opportunities to narrow state highways, as on portions of Piney Branch Road a few years ago, we pushed for that to happen. And today, that road is much safer because of those improvements. We pushed for changes on Carroll Avenue at Long Branch, and crosswalks, a pedestrian safety median, and a blinking light were installed. We pushed for pedestrian, pedestrian safety improvements on New Hampshire Avenue and University Boulevard, and they were reconfigured at the Tacoma Langley Crossroads. We installed, with permission from the state, speed cameras on Ethan Allen and on New Hampshire, and those have reduced speeds and hopefully improved pedestrian safety. We're anticipating the installation of additional speed cameras on both Ethan Allen and on University Boulevard. All of us contributed our efforts to make these things happen. City council and its staff, our state-elected officials and their staffs, the state highway administration, residents, and business owners. We've also had our frustrations. We've wanted more crosswalks at key spots along Carroll Avenue. We've wanted faster action on the installation of guardrails along Philadelphia. We've had to resist proffered potential routes for the Purple Line and encourage others. We've had to hear the frustrations of our neighbors on streets like Ethan Allen, as they've suffered with the deteriorating condition of the roadway, while the city and state highway administration stepped through the Kabuki Dance of figuring out who's responsible for the maintenance of a state highway that's partially owned by the city. We've seen the source of funding for road maintenance by local governments, the highway user revenues, which are collected by the state and returned to the local governments, slashed by 90% each of the last two budget years. The council has grappled with the issue about how to get Ethan Allen fixed for about the last year. This follows efforts by our staff, working with Councilmember Clay, Delegate Mazir, and the state highway administration, to come to terms with who would fix the road and with what funds. Those efforts played out for about a year before the issue came before the full council. Let me give you a one minute history of how this came to pass. City records show that we repaved Ethan Allen in 1966. SHA, as far as our records show, has maintained the city-owned portions of 410 since then. We know that in 1997, the state repaved the road. We also know that about three to five years ago, when the state did a traction study, they repaved portions of Philadelphia, including the city-owned portion from Maple to Park. Over the past few decades, up until about two years ago, the city and the state have operated under the assumption that we couldn't touch state highways. We couldn't fill potholes, we couldn't pave, we couldn't paint, we couldn't install signs, we couldn't issue any permits, nothing. When the stop sign and crosswalks were installed of Philadelphia and Holly, we worked with SHA for the design and installation of those projects. Eighteen months ago, after months of confusion, as SHA started telling us that because we own the road, we had to maintain it, we started patching, assumed the maintenance and repainting, yeah, assumed the maintenance and repainting, and started permitting. I think this confusion and the changed perception of responsibility came about because of the terrible budget situation at the state. Because of the same general financial conditions that the state is dealing with, plus the 90% cut in state aid for road maintenance that I explained, plus a 35% cut in state aid for police, plus the 15% reduction by Montgomery County in the amount, in the amount that they reimburse us for services provided by us that they collect taxes for. We, the city, find ourselves looking at tight finances that will probably only get worse before they get better. I'm sure many of you here tonight face those same difficulties as you look at your finances, and in turn, you wonder how you'll be able to afford your taxes. We on the city council grappled with these circumstances as we made our budget decisions last spring, and we'll face them again next year. We have to balance the long-term policy and financial interests of the city with a short-term policy and financial interests. As we've looked at how to get needed repairs made to the sections of state highway that we currently own, we have to look at how any decision we make about this might affect our costs both now and in the future. If, as the state now says, we have to maintain all existing sidewalks on state highways, whether we own them or not, we have to integrate that into our budget planning. And remember, maintenance can't be paid for with the speed camera funds, only new or expanded facilities for pedestrian safety. If we want to keep our sections of 410, that'll add to our costs. How many times can we afford, as a city, to say, if we want it done to our satisfaction, we have to do it ourselves and pay for it ourselves? How do we undertake the most important projects and initiatives, yet keep our city sustainable and affordable? No one has mentioned in any of the comments I've seen over the past few days, anything about keeping or giving up our two blocks of Carroll Avenue from Flower to Garland. This has gotten lost. No one seems to have an opinion on that. So if you have an opinion on that this evening, it would be helpful to hear that. What about taking on Flower Avenue? We want to get back in the forefront of environmental initiatives. Wouldn't creating a green street there be a giant step in that direction? How do we, how do we balance environmental sustainability, neighborhood safety and viability, and financial sustainability? We try to address that in our strategic plan and integrate from there those priorities into our budget. So where are we now? If we go forward with the current version of the agreement with the state, how do we balance long-term vision and the possibilities or probabilities that various scenarios might occur with present realities, both physical and fiscal? How do we negotiate for the community's best interests? How do we balance getting our roads maintained now as we need them to be with future potential decisions by the state? The state could always take anything it wants by eminent domain, whether we own it or not. How many tools will we need to fight against and prevent any possible state action in the future that's not to our liking? Is language like we have in our current master plan that designates 410 and other state highways as two-lane roads enough? Is it enough that we also have most of that road in a historic district? Will the Tacoma Park residents of tomorrow maintain the activism and resolve of those of us who have demonstrated our willingness to fight for our community over these last decades? I have the feeling that this point, this last point will be our best asset. If you were an official, would you pay more attention to mad and engaged citizens standing in front of you demanding action? Would you pay more attention to a decades-old agreement, when you know that circumstances have changed in the intervening years? Both have power, but counts the most. Those questions and more are what we are here tonight to discuss. We'll have different opinions about what the best answer is, and I'm sure we'll hear many opinions. My mind is open, and my colleagues' minds are open, and we want to hear what you think. Thank you for being here. Thank you for your thoughtful contributions and your continued involvement in solving questions that determine how our community goes forward with the best interests of us all at heart. So now, I'd like to see if Delegate Mazir wanted to say anything.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the city council, it's great to be here with you tonight. These meetings have gotten way too boring recently, so I'm kind of excited about tonight's dialogue. Just to give a little bit of background on my engagement in this and the perspective I bring to the table, I've had constituents that, for a year and a half now, have been raising very valid concerns about the ongoing, growing impact of the untenable situation on Ethan Allen portion of 410. I've gotten calls, emails, at community coffees during the campaign season, grabbing me at farmers markets. It's, it's been a real point of crisis concern for the residents who live on this street, but all of us who drive up and down this road. So Tacoma Park never being a community that lacks flair, I even had one constituent bring me a box full of gigantic rocks that were cratered out from the pothole in front of this person's house. And I think someone from my staff may have brought them, if Mr. Peterson would like to take them with him later. I explained to the person who bought me these rocks that I drive a smart car, so I was very familiar with these holes that could practically eat me entirely on this road. And like I said earlier, the state of Ethan Allen is, is beyond deplorable. And so we began engaging in a dialogue with many of you and with many of the players across the state about figuring out how we solve this problem. Initially, it was some finger pointing. It's always easier to point, point fingers in tough budget environments. We go to the state because this is a state highway, and it's state funding, and that's the role for our District 20 delegation to play in trying to bring home needed state funds to repair this road. And then all of a sudden, we started hearing from State Highway that magically they had done their own research, and voila, it's the city's responsibility, and the city has to pay for it. And so there was lots of, you know, trying to figure out who owns the road, who pays for it. Meanwhile, the potholes got larger and larger. Rightfully, the city, when it was told that you were now the magic new owners of this road, you didn't want to have to take a lemon back. And so we talked about maybe putting in a state bill that would say, okay, the, the road will be ours, but if it's been ours this whole time, we don't want to take from the state, when it's been your obligation under all of our operating assumptions for all this time, a road that is inoperable and, and a lemon. Don't give us a lemon. Let's put in a bill that says, fine, we'll, we'll acknowledge that this road is our responsibility now, but the state needs to give it back to us in good working order. So my office and I worked very closely with the deputy city manager on exploring that legislative approach a year ago. And we were told that it would be really tough to get a bill like that through the county delegation, that it would set precedent for other areas of, of the county trying to use an individual bill to get an individual project funded in their community, rather than going through the regular course of action. So we couldn't go that approach. So then we started talking with our federal delegation, seeing are there some creative ways that we can get some federal money in to help fix this problem. All the while, the potholes continue to grow. And so later this summer, I believe it was August, we invited the state highway administrator to do a walkabout. The constituents that had been raising concerns about this and who my office and I had continued to maintain dialogue with, said, well, maybe if they see it for real, they'll understand what kind of problem we're facing here and why we need the state to step up and provide the resources. And, and the administrator graciously agreed to do this, but given what public schedules are, he had to cancel the walkabout. And in that discussion of having to cancel his meeting with us that day, he informed me that some new discussions were taking place with the, with the city council on some potential new arrangements that could find a way out of this, out of this box. And so started to learn a little bit more about the idea at hand on, on the state being able to bring money to the table to fix these long-needed repairs. On the face of it, it seemed very reasonable to me, and, and many aspects of it still do. But I do appreciate the historic viewpoint and cause for concern that residents have, have raised when learning of this work session item. One of the things I have always valued most about this community is having historical perspectives, and having oral tradition, and having a knowledge of how we've gotten to where we are from our civic activism, and what battles we've had to fight in the past, and what lessons have we learned from it. And I think that the dialogue tonight's going to be very informative for bringing those thoughts and ideas to the table when we figure out where to go next. And we do know from this past experience in general, when it has to do with roads, to be very, very wary in our community. And so that's why we thought it would be a good idea to bring the state highway administration to the table tonight, to engage in a fully transparent discussion that would include all the parties, not just a work session item that would allow for the city council to have dialogue and to hear from the residents, but for the state highway administrator to be here to answer a lot of lingering questions that be here to answer a lot of lingering questions that might still remain about this proposed The discussion tonight is not about whether the road should be widened. No one has proposed to do that. But it's about how the road gets fixed. And so I want to thank Neil Peterson for his willingness to come join us tonight. I think it'll be helpful to get his clarifications on any number of lingering questions that have yet to be resolved or even discussed in some of the dialogue that's taken place in the last three or four days on many of the neighborhood listeners. One question I have, but I would definitely like for it to be confirmed, and if possible, provide statutory language, is that the only way a future widening of any road going through a community like 410 would happen, we were told in first asking these questions to the S.H.A. office, was that the county executive, the county council would have to have a majority vote in favor, as well as the state delegations, the entire Montgomery County House and Senate delegations would have to vote in favor of such a widening before they could move forward on it. If that's true, it sure does seem like an incredibly tall hurdle to ever moving against the community's wishes regarding 410. But again, this is what tonight's dialogue would be helpful to determine, replacing assumptions with answers and using those answers to determine what our community really wants. We still may want to say no to this, but let's truly listen to what our options are and what the threats are and what other solutions might be. I'm looking forward to an open dialogue tonight to explore the full range of options here. Maybe the swap makes sense under certain conditions, and we figure out how to strengthen the document tonight. Maybe there is no scenario under which we want to engage in the exchange, and we walk away and have to find some other approach. But let's have an informed, calm discussion about the facts so that we can make an informed, smart decision. Because this road needs to be fixed, no matter who owns it. So we have to work towards solutions tonight, whatever they may be. And I stand ready to continue offering my assistance and that of my staff to help find the best approach to fixing this problem that must be addressed, because the road has to be fixed. And I want to thank you for all the hard work you've put into this up to now, and really want to thank you for trying to bring this to a responsible decision for the community and always being open to listening to the community's concerns and shaping our final approaches.
Thank you. I'll note again that Delegate Tom Hooker is here, and we've also been joined by our state senator and Tacoma Park resident, Jamie Raskin. Next, I'd like to go to Deputy Manager Suzanne Ludlow for a few comments.
Good evening. As Delegate Mazir mentioned, we've been working on this for quite a long time, trying to find a way to handle complaints about the road condition on Ethan Allen. And there's also been, as part of these discussions, concern about the road condition on Flower Avenue and how that should be maintained in the future. I put up on the screen, and I'm new to this technology, so if I mess something up, it'll take a moment, but I wanted to show a map. It's in the packages that we had some of out. But this is a map that's annotated with some information on state highways in Tacoma Park. And one of the things I'd like to point out is that the green line that's going horizontally is Route 410 through Tacoma Park. The blue line is Carroll Avenue, which is also called 195. And the brown and yellow line is Flower Avenue between Carroll Avenue and Piney Branch Road, which is Maryland Route 787. The areas that are on this map that have the little brown circles that I drew on here are areas that are indicated as city ownership on the state highways maintenance records. And as you can see, a good portion of 410 through Tacoma Park fits that category, as does about two and a half blocks of Carroll Avenue north of Flower Avenue. There has been confusion over how to maintain these sections for a long time, and trying to resolve this has been part of our job in our discussions. Besides the element of how to resolve the issue on 410, there's also been concern about and some discussions about Flower Avenue, Route 787. Flower Avenue is a state highway. It's not in good shape. It's not also, it also does not really function as a state highway. And it used to be that it went from Carroll to Franklin as Route 787. The portion between Piney Branch and Franklin was swapped, I think, for Great Seneca Highway some years ago by Montgomery County. So that's no longer state highway north of Piney Branch Road. One of the interesting features of Flower Avenue is that the city boundary is on the eastern side of the roadway. So there is a sidewalk and two lanes of roads within the city of Tacoma Park, and then there's a section between the roadway and the Silver Spring properties on the east side that is unincorporated Montgomery County. It's all state highway right-of-way, but it does have this kind of strange jurisdictional split, which has added some dimension of problem to this. As the mayor mentioned, it's often the jurisdiction's role to manage and maintain sidewalks. And if people are familiar with the eastern sidewalk of Flower Avenue in that segment, you'll know that it's just in terrible shape. It's asphalt over roots and that kind of thing crumbling away. And for years, even though it's not within the city limits, the city of Tacoma Park has advocated for that to get fixed and so that it's a safe pedestrian way for the people who need to go to the bus stops, who live in Tacoma Park, who go to Rolling Terrace Elementary School, who go to the university, or the hospital, or the shopping districts. The Montgomery County does have a planning study and sidewalk restoration in that segment in their capital improvement program for fiscal year 2016. Councilmember Snipper has seen it be pushed back year after year after year in the Montgomery County budgeting program. It is something that is important to us, and as we talked about this, one of the proposals is to, is for the city to take the, annex the rest of the right-of-way on Flower Avenue so that there's just one jurisdiction that would handle enforcement and maintenance in that segment. Make it an arrangement with the county, because they have pledged some funds, even though it's far in the future, to do the work on the sidewalk to ensure that improvements get done jointly. And the proposal that's on the table would then turn over the maintenance of the roadway to the city of Tacoma Park for creation of a green street, which is an idea that's popping up in a number of cities. Portland, Oregon has taken this, I think, to the ultimate limit. But what it does basically is it makes sure that there are safe walking routes, there's bus stops, there's low-impact stormwater design, and it meets a lot of the environmental standards that we would hope for as a city. I just wanted to give you some of those points, and I'll show on the screen as well the proposal that's before the council. Let's see. Is it here? The Maryland Secretary of Transportation on August 4th made a proposal to do a land transfer and related exchange to the city. And we've had discussions after that time trying to, because this is a complex matter, coming up with some language that reflects a number of these border issues and that kind of thing. And the proposal that is before the council indicates that State Highway will initiate a project to patch, grind, and overlay the portions of Maryland 410 in the city of Tacoma Park that need restoration, that upon completion of the pavement improvement work on Maryland 410, the city will transfer ownership of its portion of Maryland 410 and Maryland 195, which is the two blocks of Carroll Avenue that we showed you before, to State Highway. That S.H.A. has no plans to revise the number of through lanes or major transportation features of Maryland 410 and Maryland 195 within the city of Tacoma Park, and agrees that it would consult with the city of Tacoma Park before undertaking any major changes to either of these roadways. That S.H.A. agrees to leave and maintain existing traffic control measures, stop signs, crosswalks, et cetera, on Maryland 410 in place unless it first consults with the Tacoma Park City Council prior to making such changes. Then S.H.A. agrees to transfer $696,000 in two equal payments, one payment in FY 2011, which is our current fiscal year, and one payment in FY 2012, to the city of Tacoma Park in lieu of making road improvements to Maryland 787 Flower Avenue. The city of Tacoma Park agrees to use these monies for upgrades to Maryland 787 to a green street. Upon completion of the second payment, the city of Tacoma Park will take over maintenance responsibility for Maryland 787 within the city limits. The city will annex the portion of the Maryland 787 right-of-way that is outside of the boundary of the city of Tacoma Park no later than the FY 2012 payment of $348,000 from S.H.A. The final thing that I want to mention is that annexation is a relatively complex thing, and the, there is in the package of information kind of a schedule for how that could go forward. We have to do advertising and talking with the residents, and obviously, if there is a move to go forward with a green street kind of proposal, we would want to work very closely with the neighborhood to see what works best for them on that street. One of the things I think that is important is that we won't know the cost of that project until we have those discussions with the community to see how much parking is needed, what kind of lighting or other issues might be required in that area. I think that's kind of the overview of the facts that are on the table at this point. And I'll turn it back over. We certainly have more information we can share, but I think I'll turn it back over to the mayor.
Okay. At this point, maybe if we can have State Highway Administrator Neil Peterson and Assistant District Engineer Kate Mazara come up here and, oh, you can pick either spot. And welcome, and we appreciate your both being here, and hope that we can get some clarity and some possible resolution to some of these issues. And we'd be happy to hear anything that you can share with us, and hope that you can, just making sure things are on. See if there's anything that we can come to.
Mr. Mayor and members of the council, it's certainly a pleasure to be here this evening. For the record, my name is Neil Peterson, and I am State Highway Administrator in Maryland. And I know that a number of issues have been raised. I would like to try to provide clarity to as many of them as I can in introductory remarks, but I suspect that there will be additional questions, and we certainly want to try to go through as many of them as possible and provide answers to those that we can and those that we can't. We will certainly know and try to get back with you as well. Unfortunately, our district engineer, Brian Young, who is in the lead on this issue, was not able to be here tonight, so I will try to address issues from a policy perspective. Kate Mazera, our Assistant District Engineer, who has been more involved in this issue than I have, will try to help me with some of the details as well. Let me start by saying that, from my perspective, as a both State Highway Administrator, who feels a sense of responsibility not just for S.H.A.-owned roadways, but for the entire road network and entire state of Maryland, as well as a resident of Montgomery County and a former resident of just outside the limits of the city of Tacoma Park, the condition of particularly the Ethan Allen Avenue section of Maryland 410 is totally unacceptable. And I think we have a common objective of trying to find a solution that will enable us to correct the unacceptable condition, not just of that, but really of the entire section that is city-owned of Maryland 410. Second point I would like to make, and I want to get into this in some more detail, I want to make perfectly clear that State Highway Administration has absolutely no interest whatsoever in any widening of Maryland 410 through the city of Tacoma Park. My position as State Highway Administrator is that that would be a totally inappropriate proposal for us to be making. The roadway is quite appropriate in terms of its current cross-section as it goes through Tacoma Park, given the historic nature of the area that it passes through. And I think that there are a number of legal protections in place that make it highly unlikely that even if there were someone in my position who would be of a different mind, I was going to use stronger language, but of a different mind, that it's virtually impossible that it could happen. Delegate Mazir very correctly cited that for any major widening of a roadway on our secondary system, which Maryland 410 is, to be considered, it must first have the endorsement of both the county executive and a majority of the county council, as well as a majority of both the senate delegation and house delegation from Montgomery County. And they have to identify it as the number-one priority for a roadway widening project on the secondary system in all of Montgomery County. I can tell you, given the extent of the needs that there are in Montgomery County of roadways that the county wants widened, that citizens are clamoring to have widened, that there is virtually no chance within our lifetime or the lifetime of the next two or three generations that I can foresee that that would ever become a priority, even if elected officials decided to have a change of heart. Second, and perhaps even stronger protection from my perspective, are the Historic Preservation Acts at both federal and state level. The federal, the National Historic Preservation Act, Section 106 of the National Historic Preservation Act, provides protections for the very types of area that Maryland 410 passes through, and places an extremely high hurdle on a State Highway Administration to be able to do any significant changes to roadway through a section such as Tacoma Park. And there's similar legislation at the state level that's worded very similarly to Section 106 of the National Historic Preservation Act. An even stronger provision of Section 106 of the National Historic Preservation Act is Section 4F of the U.S. DOT Act of 1966, which provides protections for both parkland, publicly owned recreation areas, and National Register eligible historic sites, which this area of Tacoma Park would qualify. And basically says that State Highway Administrations cannot be making major improvements if there are no prudent feasible alternatives. Section 4F, I can tell you, places an extremely high hurdle. It has a long case history in law, including a landmark Supreme Court decision, that makes it extremely difficult, if not in most cases impossible, for us to do the type of improvement that widening Route 410 would entail. So we have absolutely no interest, I can tell you, from a policy perspective, from this administration, as well as prior administrations that I have worked for, particularly in areas like this, our interest is exactly- areas like this, our interest is exactly the opposite. I think, Mr. Mayor, you went through and cited a number of examples where we have worked together with Tacoma Park in terms of trying to either introduce traffic calming or to be—in case of Piney Branch Road narrowing the roadway—trying to do things to enhance pedestrian safety. I spent a fair amount of time this morning with my staff on the very issue of pedestrian safety. It's one of the very highest policy priorities that I have as a State Highway Administrator. Through areas like this, I want to be trying to slow the traffic down because we need to be doing that for pedestrian safety reasons. With regard to the ownership issue, because I know that there have been a number of questions raised as to does the city of Tacoma Park really own these sections, Maryland 410 and Carol Avenue? How is it that State Highway Administration was maintaining this for so many years, and then all of a sudden decided that it no longer was going to? Sometimes State Highway Administration makes mistakes. We made a mistake for several decades. The fact of the matter is that when Maryland 410 was constructed, both east and west of Tacoma Park, the section through Tacoma Park with one very small section was not reconstructed, was not widened. And the decision was made that Maryland 410 would tie into streets that, at that time, were City of Tacoma Park streets, Philadelphia Avenue and Ethan Allen Avenue. And therefore, State Highway Administration never took ownership of those streets. It does own the sections that did get reconstructed. There's a very, very short section within the city itself that did get reconstructed. Of course, we do own the section that is common with Carol Avenue as well. It was not, as has been alleged for budgetary reasons, that we ended up finding out or concluding that we didn't own it. I don't have all of the details, but there was some research done that was necessary for us to find out ownership, and it was through that research that it was discovered that, in fact, we did not own it and, in fact, had mistakenly been maintaining it. Question has been raised, well, if you did that for whether it was 40 years or 50 years or whatever, why can't you just continue that practice? Fact of the matter is, state law does not grant State Highway Administration or any State Highway Administrator authority for us to be spending money on roadways other than S H A-owned roadways. So once we discovered the fact that we did not own it, and that became known at that point in time, we really did not have the legal authority at that point to continue to be maintaining it. Now, there have been some things that have been done even since that was discovered, that as we have gotten the word throughout the administration, we've realized we've actually continued some things that we probably shouldn't have done, and in the interest of public safety in particular, have continued to plow snow on the roadway in the winter. That's something I suppose that if a budget analyst in Annapolis took me a task or probably could, but usually I do end up prevailing when it comes to issues of emergencies and public safety and issues like that. But the fact of the matter is, at this point in time, we have established that we do not own those sections of Maryland 410. However, given the condition, and given that we have heard both from—I have personally heard from citizens as well as from legislators on this issue, and Mr. Mayor, you met with my boss, Secretary of Transportation of Maryland Staley, this summer and raised this as an issue. She came back to me after that meeting and said, "Can't you find a way to solve this problem?" And it was the proposal that was in her letter to you that we offered as a way—a potential way—that we would be able to take ownership of Maryland 410 from a precedent standpoint, something that we could live with in terms of similar issues that we have elsewhere, and enable Route 410 upgrade to be—to take place—for us to transfer a roadway that functionally really should not be a State Highway, that is Flower Avenue, for you to receive Flower Avenue in a good condition so that you wouldn't be having major maintenance costs associated with that. And we thought that it was a fair proposal. There have been a number of discussions regarding details associated with that since that time, which I have considered to be very constructive discussions in terms of the details as well. We are certainly very flexible and willing to work with you in terms of monies that we would have spent on resurfacing Flower Avenue, as long as we know those monies will be spent on improvements to Flower Avenue to make money available rather than are actually doing the resurfacing itself, if your desire is to reconstruct Flower Avenue as a green street. So we are flexible in that regard as well. With regard to timing issues, because I know there have been questions about timing, and I think that there's certainly been expressions of interest to me that we need to try to solve the problem on Maryland 410 sooner rather than later. We're really looking at need to be advertising a project for the milling, repair, and overlay of Route 410 no later than March of next year, if we are going to get that project finished before the end of next construction season. So I think that's really the—what I would say is target that we need to be looking for, for us to be able to advertise the project. And for us to advertise the project, we certainly have to have had a signed agreement with you at that point in time. So we still have some time to try to work through the issues, but I've been involved for 28 years now in these type of discussions, and that's not a long time to—so we do need to keep our eye on the goal line in terms of if we do want to be proceeding forward in reaching agreement on this. With regard to the issue of—and I know there have been some that have said that this is something that S H A is trying to push as an S H A agenda. Quite frankly, we have been trying to respond to the issues that have been raised to us about the deplorable condition of both Philadelphia Avenue and Ethan Allen Avenue, and tried to offer a potential solution that would enable the reconstruction to take place. We do have a number of municipalities in Maryland where a state highway approaches the municipality municipal boundary or may even go partway into the municipality. The municipality owns the street that the state highway continues on, and then it goes out of the municipality on the other side, and that section of state highway that is owned by the municipality is also maintained by the municipality. So there are policy and precedent issues that I have to be very careful about in terms of decisions that get made here, recognizing that other municipalities can say, "Well, if you did this for Tacoma Park, we expect you to do the same for us." So I do have to be very mindful of decisions being made in a broader context than just a decision for Tacoma Park itself, but a decision that really I have to recognize—I—both I and my successors have to live with from a precedent standpoint as well. So you will hear, perhaps in response to some of the questions that may get raised, that from a policy perspective, it is something that I'm concerned about, because I do have to think about that from a broader context than just the decision that is being made on this particular roadway. Another question that has been raised is potential use of federal funds. I think there may have been a misunderstanding that it was our intention to use American Recovery and Reinvestment Act funding for the upgrade of Route 410. That is not federal funds that we would intend to use. We would intend to use regular formula funds that we do receive from Federal Highway Administration that can be used on roadways like Route 410. We generally do not make those federal funds available for improvements on municipal streets. We have historically made funding available through both Highway User Revenues and other state funds that get made available in lieu of federal funds as well. So they are not funds that do get made available for municipalities. I'm sure that there were other questions that have been floating that I may not have thought of right now to address, but I think those were the principal ones that I can remember. Did I get any of the facts wrong?
No, I think you did a good job, Neil.
She tells me when I don't, so she's not just brown-nosing.
Is there anything that you wanted to add?
No, I think that's good.
Okay. Thank you for your engagement and responsiveness on this, and we appreciate your efforts to try and come up with a solution that will address the needs that have been so glaringly made evident to all of us. Do my council colleagues have questions? Councilmember Robinson?
Thanks for coming. Thanks for informing us. I'd like to thank the city attorney for being here and all you in the public for being here. This is a good discussion already, and I have a couple of questions. I understand that from a policy perspective, you're looking at a lot of things. How do municipalities handle state roads that are in their borders, or how don't they handle them? And I'm leaving aside all of the question of who owns our roadway. I don't think that's so important as far as an historical perspective. But we're—our world is one where we feel sometimes kind of besieged by the county, for example, or counties. We don't have our own planning and land use authority here in this town. The county is—has developed our neighboring area—it's not a municipality, but it's much larger than us, Silver Spring—in a way that's very dense and therefore generates a lot of traffic in its own right, and they're talking about generating a great deal of development on the other side, on the Prince George's County side, along New Hampshire Avenue. We have an interest in that as well, but that would also generate a great—an additional traffic burden. So notwithstanding the notion that we don't want 410 widened, there's a certain sense of pressure. If there's a lot of traffic on one side, the west side, and there's a lot of traffic on the east side, it seems like there's going to be pressure to make—to have more of a throughput situation between the two—these two nodes. We have a balance of power issue between ourselves and the county, as you've probably heard. Because we don't have the land use, we aren't given the kind of funding that we feel is appropriate for the kind of services that we provide. So that's a continuing issue as well. And as Bruce mentioned, there's a lot of funding issues that have come to the fore. As we've talked and listened over the past few days, one notion has come up, and that is the notion of decoupling. In other words, this is a fairly complicated proposal that's before us. You'll resurface 410, you'll give us money to resurface Flower, you'll give us Flower, we'll give you portions of 410 that we own. As Bruce said, it doesn't address the portions of Carol that are still—it's still something that's unresolved. I'm of the opinion that we ought to step back a little bit and say, "Let's deal with Flower as Flower, and let's deal with 410 as 410." So that's one question, and I don't think that that's a policy question. I think it's probably more of a procedural question in our negotiations. So I'll put that on the table.
Would you like me to address it?
That would be great, yeah, if you can.
I would like to have some more discussions with my staff about details of that, but it is certainly something that I'm willing to consider. I don't want to give you a definitive answer tonight. I think the timing and the money being made available for Flower, if we decoupled it, I would want to have timed closer to when the improvements are that you would actually make on Flower Avenue, as opposed to basically giving you cash that you can bank rather than are using it on needed improvements elsewhere. Quite frankly, the reason that the money is budgeted right now was it was our intention to spend it on resurfacing Flower Avenue. And if it's going to be two or three years before you would do it, I would think we could be in a position that we could commit to the funding being available at such time as you're ready to do the project, as opposed to now when we would have resurfaced it. It's part of the larger deal that is a package deal, and it's not quite so sitting out there as—on its own—as money that we've made available but isn't being spent. So that's just some initial thoughts.
Thanks. Another notion that's come up is the sense that—and this is part of the dynamic of our conversation—we have local roads and traffic that's generated on our local roads, and in general, I think we're all probably comfortable with maintaining our own local roads for our local traffic. And then there are roads which have non-local traffic, and clearly 410 is in that category. There's a lot of traffic that comes through our town that's doesn't—isn't generated from within our borders. And I can understand why Flower Avenue has moved to a different kind of status in that regard, and so I can then—I can see your willingness or even enthusiasm, or maybe that's too strong a word, to move the ownership of Flower into our hands so that we can then maintain it.
Just for the record, I lived for five years just off Flower Avenue north—just north of Piney Branch Road.
Okay, great. I'm—there's a—and the concern is palpable about who owns 410 and how do we maintain it as a locality. There's some sense that we could maintain our own roads very well, thank you very much, and we might even do it cheaper than you could do it. I don't know if that's really true, but you know, it'd be nice to think that and maybe even be more responsive in resurfacing our own roadways because we don't have the superstructure that you have and the planning issues and so forth. So part of where I'm coming from is maybe it makes sense to own our own roadways and keep ownership of 410 so that we can be more responsive to the needs of resurfacing it, as opposed to putting it in your hands and then waiting for your cycle to go around, as has been the case to this point, although I understand that the notion of who owns the road has been a complicating factor. But the part that is not clear to me is how we could maintain the road for our own traffic and have you help us maintain the road for traffic that's not generated from within our boundaries. And that's, to me, the mix and the complication that's on the table right now. I could see us maintaining our roadways, that roadway, 410, and you're helping out for the non-local traffic that goes through. So that's more the direction that I'm coming from, and that's more like a financing or funding issue and a responsibility for doing the actual maintenance I'd like to see left in our hands. I'm not sure that that's a question, but it's a concept that I'd like to put out there for you to consider and maybe—and I have other things to say, but I think I'm going to not say them, just in a sense of moving on. I think I've touched all of the things that were on my mind.
If I could come— If I could comment on your last comment, and I don't know specifically what you have in mind in terms of the division of responsibility, but we do have roadways here in Montgomery County as well as elsewhere in the state in which we have shared maintenance responsibility with the local jurisdiction. So, it is not something that is unprecedented.
Okay.
Some of the county urban districts, as an example, the county has fairly significant maintenance responsibility for non-pavement sections of our rights of way.
Thank you.
Councilmember Clay?
Thank you. So, first, I want to say that I prepared written remarks because I think it'd be faster. And even though some of the questions have been answered already, I'm going to read them anyway because I still think it'll be faster than me speaking extemporaneously. And the other thing I want to say is I'm not going to speak for other people on the council, so I'm just going to talk about this from the Ward Two perspective and myself, although I know that other council members have been engaged in the issue both around the 410 and Flower Avenue, but I'm not going to speak to that. So, because I don't mention it, it doesn't diminish that in any way. So, I wanted to say thank you to everyone who's come out tonight to engage the discussion around Ethan Allen 410 and Philadelphia Avenue. And I especially want to thank delegate Heather Mazir and Neil Peterson and Kate Mazzara and all of the Ward Two residents especially who are here tonight, although I welcome everybody. There's been a lot of email conversation about this issue in the last week, and as is the nature of email traffic, not all that has been forwarded that has been factually correct, and there have been some mischaracterizations of the process and the motivation. And for that reason, I want to take a minute to review the history from my perspective, correct some of the misstatements, and then lay out what I think the current arguments are, as well as the remaining questions that I would like to have answered before rendering a conclusion on this. I've been working to get Ethan Allen repaved for about three years now, and this has not been a secretive process, and I have spoken with many residents about this effort, including at community meetings. The state has maintained the road for as long as anyone here can remember, apparently until nineteen, since 1966. It makes sense. It is, after all, called State Highway 410. The road is in horrendous and unsafe condition, and that has been made worse by the development and expansion of homes along the Ward Two section of the road because of the street cuts and the failure of the State Highway Administration to adequately inspect road and sidewalk repairs done under the permitting system that they have. This has resulted in the road being in much worse condition than one would see from regular wear and tear. The response from the city staff has been a constant, the state owns the road and will not allow us to work on it, which you heard reflected here tonight. Historic Tacoma Board member Sabrina Barron provided me with information that the city actually owned the road or parts of it over the last couple of years. She gave me that information. No one seemed to be able to provide a definitive response nor documentation one way or the other, and I still have not seen any documentation that the city or the state holds ownership of the road, your lovely Matt, notwithstanding. For this reason, I began asking constituents to directly contact State Delegate Heather Mazir and Senator Jamie Raskin. While I have very friendly relationships with both and find them to be highly responsive, I also know that politicians like to hear directly from their constituents. Mayor Bruce Williams also engaged the process, working his contacts with the state. Last year, the city staff informed me that the state had changed its tune, claiming that the city owned the road. Finally, I thought it would get repaved. We placed funding from the reserve fund into the budget to repave the road in 2011. Just prior to passage of the budget, Mayor Williams stated that he thought we were close to getting agreement from the state to fix the road before we resumed maintenance. Council members understandably would like to save the city funds, so we agreed to pull the line from the budget, and if the mayor could not secure an agreement from S.H.A., then we would do a budget amendment and get the road paved this fiscal year. This fall, the mayor did secure a tentative agreement from S.H.A. to repave the road. However, the funds included federal dollars, which the state claimed require the state to own the roadway in order to use the funds on the road. At the same time all of this was happening, others were engaged in discussions about Flower Avenue, and I'll leave that to those who have more knowledge to discuss. What then came to the council as the mechanism for the state to pay 410 was a resolution that the city would cede the remaining bits of 410 currently deemed by the state as owned by the city back to the state, at which time the state would repave the road. When this came before the council for a vote last week, I asked if we could hold off to get some questions answered, and the council agreed. I had two questions at that time. What is the value of city ownership? And specifically, does it give the city permitting control and crosswalk control? What are the other mechanisms available to the city to achieve those same objectives? All of this has, it's all transitioned to the road swap recently, and thus, the point of public input around the greater issues beyond simple repaving have ripened recently. I know some people now feel that they were excluded from the ongoing discussion of a swap, but that is not so. I look forward to a robust discussion of the important policy and factual issues before us tonight and to getting the answers to the questions put forth by the council and the residents. One issue which has been raised has been the issue of widening 410 to a four-lane or greater highway. There has been much opinionating on this issue. I spoke to this before, so in recap, I'll just say I see no significant impediment to S.H.A. widening the road provided by the ownership of the road, as the laws regarding the use of eminent domain are well documented and tested by the highest courts. There are no current cases I know of that would indicate any impediment to the sovereign, in this case, the state, using eminent domain to widen the road, essentially a taking for a commonly recognized purpose. Those cases that have gotten some traction have been about taking private land for a non-public purpose or where in providing for the public purpose, the land was given to a private entity. Maryland S.H.A. has a nice pamphlet about this on their website. It's very beautiful. And a local land use attorney has a nice piece on the web about this relative to the ICC, which support my statements. However, as I'm not an attorney, I ask the city to get the opinion on the eminent domain issue so we can dispense with the legal speculation on this issue. I have no current objections to assuming ownership of Flower Avenue. I would ask that the council agree to include improvements to the intersection of Flower and Carroll on the Long Branch Lido Slide of Carroll as a part of that work. I am not convinced that the transfer of 410 to S.H.A. is something I support because I do not have all the information required to make that decision. Neither am I opposed to it. I ask for reconsideration of this issue, not because I believe that city ownership is an impediment to widening the road. In fact, I believe it is no impediment. I believe that the master plan process, the historic district provisions, and political power would be the most effective deterrent to the widening of 410. I do want to say I also went and looked at your 4F training on the web today, and it was also very nice. Thank you. I ask for reconsideration of this resolution on this issue because I would like to know the answers to the following questions. I'm going to just read them. I don't want you to stop and answer them one at a time, but I'll read slower. So, what is the value of city ownership? And specifically, does it give the city permitting control and crosswalk control? What are the other mechanisms available to the city to achieve those same objectives? And it sounds like you have some shared maintenance in other places, so it'd be interesting to hear about that. Can the city and the state each have permitting, as is seemed indicated in the state's highway access permit process, which is on their website and is about how, when a state owns a road, who gets to essentially have a curb cut, if you will, into access to their property abutting the road? Is it true that the state must own the roadway in order to use federal funds to maintain the road? And if so, what is the definition of own? And is an easement or limited right-of-way enough to satisfy the federal requirement or possibly the state requirement? Delegate Tom Huckers stated in his email today that the state cannot use state funds on a road it does not control, and implies that the state legislature would need to request funds to repay Flower Avenue. If this is so, how valid is the state's offer to provide $700,000 to the city to repay Flower Avenue since they would no longer own it? What is the definition of a state highway, and what does it mean for ownership and roadway control? Can a road be designated as a state highway if the state does not own it or control the right-of-way? Is there a timeliness issue? Do we have to decide the ownership right now since the road will not be repaved till summer? You already answered that. Why does the resolution state that the city will transfer ownership of 410 after the paving if S.H.A. can't pave a road they don't own? So, maybe that's a small technical clarification. And is it easier for the state politically to keep the swap coupled due to the political precedent you mentioned tonight by the S.H.A.? I added that question. I thought before the decoupling wasn't really a big deal to you, but maybe it is because of the, you've got a history of swapping the great piece of Flower for great Seneca, and it's easier messaging for you. So, those are my questions, and thank you.
Can you repeat the last one?
The last one? Is it easier for the state politically to keep the swap? Essentially, you put forth, for me, you know, I was talking about repaving 410, and then when it came forward, it was a swap of Flower Avenue for 410. And then we had the discussion, could we decouple it? And I thought, well, sure. Why wouldn't the state want to decouple it? Because what do they care if we take over ownership of Flower and keep ownership of 410? It seems like you, there's no added long-term maintenance burden to you. I didn't think you would care, but after listening to you talk tonight, and I heard the thing about, you know, how do you message this politically to other entities who also have a section that is, connects two pieces of state highway together, and you're not assuming maintenance of theirs? And so, maybe that's why you coupled it that way, because it's more politically feasible for you to express it that way. It is, in fact, a trade of maintenance activities. We don't have to pay to maintain 410, but do take on Flower and vice versa. So, it's equal.
Mr. Mayor, would you like me to try to answer all of the questions?
Sure.
My handwriting is not the best, so I may have to ask for a few of them to get repeated. What is the value of city ownership? I'm not sure that that is one that I can entirely answer myself, but I'll try to at least give.
Well, you're specifically focused on permitting control and crosswalk control.
Right. Clearly, if you own a roadway, then you have responsibility for the permits that are issued. You also have responsibility for the traffic control devices, although you are bound by the same laws we are following the manual and uniform traffic control devices.
So noted.
The permitting that you specifically referenced was access permits, and we really do consider that.
Cut in the road. No. I'm just referring to that as a model. What happens is people do a utility cut in the road.
Utility cuts, okay. You then would control issuance of utility permits if you owned and maintained the road. I can tell you that this is an issue that we are challenged with constantly. Utilities often are doing work that isn't all done at one time. It's done sometimes over a course of months or even years. They will put in temporary patches that end up lasting longer than we would like as temporary patches. I think that's been some of the problem that, at least as Brian has explained to me, that we've been facing in this particular instance as well. I mean, ultimately, the utility is responsible for returning the roadway pavements to the same condition that it was or better than it was before they actually made the utility cut. And we have inspectors that go out to make that, and it is a judgment call. I recognize it as a professional judgment call as to whether they have actually restored it. But the control would be a city control if you owned and maintained the road.
So, the next one was other mechanisms available to the city to achieve those same objectives? And one of the things that, and also the next question is, can the city and the state each have permitting as it is seemed indicated in the state's highway access permit process? So, you talk about shared maintenance. Is there some way for us to both have a voice in whether or not a bond gets released or the permit gets closed out?
It's a little bit more complicated than, say, with the county, where the county has land use control and therefore the site plan approval, and ultimately issues the use and occupancy permit. We usually work very closely with counties in terms of ensuring that they do not issue use and occupancy permits until the improvements that have to be made are made satisfactorily to the state highway, whether it's natural access into the property or off-site improvements as well.
I saw that, but that's kind of the, that's like, that's the reverse. So, in the, when we're talking about access instead of road cuts, the county does the permitting and you approve it. What we're talking about would, I think, kind of be the reverse maybe, where you do the permitting and we have some kind of a sign-off on it that they actually.
We certainly can be consulting with you in terms of input. I think ultimately, it is a permit that we have issued to utility. We ultimately have responsibility. We're the ones that utility will sue if they're not treated correctly.
Right.
So, I think in the end, we have to have final control, but we certainly can be talking about some type of consultation process. Can you?
Is it true that the state has to own the roadway in order to use federal funds to maintain the road? And if so, what's the definition of own? Is it an easement or limited right-of-way? Like, I can't figure out, and we got questions from constituents, what does it mean to own the road? Is it a designation? Like, what does that mean? Some constituents tried to find it in the definitions in the state title code, and it listed state highway, and it listed highways, but it wasn't really clear what really makes something a state highway, and did it require ownership? And is it, or is it just a right-of-way or an easement or?
Yeah. I think there are two separate concepts here from a legal perspective. I am not a lawyer, although I do have to spend a lot of time with lawyers. And there's the concept of what constitutes a state highway as opposed to the concept of the ownership of the underlying land that is the right-of-way that the highway rests on. As I stated before, the State Highway Administration can only spend money on roadways that are designated state highways, that we have control of as a state highway.
So, the designation means ownership.
Now, as a matter of policy, we want to own the right-of-way that is under the roadway, and there are very good reasons for that. If we have to be going in and doing our drainage improvements or adjustments to drainage or have to move utilities or we have to make changes, we really should be controlling the right-of-way that the roadway is on. I can tell you that the process for transfer of right-of-way usually lags the process for transfer of the roadway. When we, for example, do a roadway transfer, it can be sometimes as much as two years before that transfer of the right-of-way actually occurs because it is a longer process. But it is a policy goal, and in fact, I have been, I have made a priority of our office of real estate that they try to get the rights of way as quickly as possible after the transfers take place so that we don't have any impediments. If there are particularly things associated with drainage, that's one of the more complicated issues or questions about whether we can be putting up traffic signs or putting up a traffic signal control box or whatever we need to within the right-of-way itself. We want to actually own the right-of-way, but we have to be doing the things outside pavement itself.
So, what you're talking about is, so when a state highway gets designated, it's on a roadway then that you own, which is curb-to-curb?
Yes.
But the additional two years is for the, essentially, the easement or?
The underlying real estate that it is.
Including the road bed?
Including the road.
So, then you have a designation of a state highway that you own, but you don't yet, you haven't yet completed the transfer of the underlying roadway or the right-of-way. How do you spend money on that if you're?
Because it is, because it is a state highway.
Because it's a process? Okay.
Now, I will tell you that we do have examples. We always went to, we always went to own the underlying fee under the roadway itself. We went to own the underlying fee under hardware that we have to have associated with the roadway, whether it's drainage or signs or whatever. But for example, fill slopes sometimes will be an ease, will have easements as opposed to owning the underlying fee for fill slopes. Or sometimes even some drainage will have a drainage easement that goes outside our roadway as well. So, there are easements, but generally not under the roadway itself.
Okay. I think that actually answers the next question and the next one. And you already answered the timeliness issue. So, and you answered the next one in that. So, the last one was whether or not it's easier for the state politically to keep the swap coupled due to the political precedent you mentioned tonight.
I'm going to take the word political out of the answer that I give.
That's fair.
And replace it with, from a precedent or policy standpoint. And replace it with, from a precedent or policy standpoint. Okay. We do road transfers quite frequently. We have counties and municipalities around the state. And the concept is to try to transfer equivalent amounts of roadway, usually equivalent number of miles, but it's not always. Sometimes there are bridges involved or whatever, but basically equivalent value, and it's usually driven by what long-term maintenance costs are going to be. I think if we were to decouple Flower Avenue and you were to take it from us, we would probably still, within our own records, have something that says, this has been transferred to the city of Tacoma Park with the understanding that we may take Maryland 410 if, at some future point, if, in exchange, if the city of Tacoma Park were to tell us in the future they wanted to do that. So that there would still be that linkage. Otherwise, I would be, if I was just taking Route 410 without some type of trade, and how can I go to the city of Hagerstown, which has asked me to take a roadway that they own that is US-11, and we have said only if we have a road transfer of equivalent amounts? And I have other municipalities as well, but that's one that is very fresh up my mind right now.
Thank you so much for coming tonight and answering my questions.
Okay, I see that Councilmember Snapper is next, and then Councilmember Wright, and then Councilmember Schultz. And then, if there's nobody else, we'll hopefully get a chance for public comment. And I also want to make sure that the city attorney, if you have anything that you need to say, that we get that as well. So, Councilmember Snapper.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I want to thank everyone for coming. I want to thank you, Mr. Pedersen, and you, Ms. Zara, and of course, our delegates and Senator are really essential partners in what happens, not only because they live either in the city or nearby, they care deeply about Tacoma Park. I don't want to, you have in fact answered some of my questions, so I'll return to what my constituents have been talking to me about, because I think, in a way, it needs to be made public. First is that I and my constituents have no interest in widening 410, but they do want it maintained now and in the future, as you heard. They also want Flower Avenue to become part of Tacoma Park. As you've indicated, it's really not a state road anymore. It's kind of transitioned a bit. And the most emotional issue that I hear is an issue of trust, and I just want to be upfront about it. And there needs to be a way to ensure that 410 is not widened. And I don't know what that method is. A number of them have been discussed. It's difficult for S.H.A. to give those kinds of assurances. Nevertheless, I think that's an extremely important part of the whole discussion, and we will not move forward without progress on that issue. And I do note that, I grew up in Southern California, the land of freeways, and I'm old enough to remember when they first were being built, and they were promised to relieve congestion. I tell by the laughter that some of you know what I'm about to say, which is, every time you build a road, a new highway, a new freeway, it's wonderful for the first, maybe even year or two. I mean, it's wide open. It's free. It's delightful. You zoom along on it, and then people discover it. And pretty soon, it's just as congested as the other road was. And what happens is that people fill up the road. So you build another road, and they just fill it up. It's just part of human nature. People say, wow, that road's empty. I'm going to go drive on it. And pretty soon, a year or two goes by, and it's just as full as the previous one. So I am, I'm a firm believer that that dynamic will happen into the future, and even if 410 were widened, it would still be just as clogged during rush hour and other times as it is today. It's not a solution to widen 410. We can just build roads until we're blue in the face. We had all the money in the world, and it would not solve the traffic problem. We need to look elsewhere for solving the traffic problem. And we could have a whole discussion about what that might be, but that's not what we're doing tonight. And then I'll finally make a pitch. The mayor's already made this pitch. I will reiterate it, which is that, wow, we thought it was really unfair for highway user revenue, which is collected specifically by people in Tacoma Park who drive on the roads here. It's a tax that's supposed to be for repairing the roads. And somehow, the state decided that they were going to use that money for other things, not even for roads. It's not like they took 90% of our highway user revenue and filled roads somewhere else. They didn't even do that. They just put it elsewhere on the budget. And we need that money back, and we need it soon. And I'll stop there. Thank you.
Councilmember Wright.
Thank you for being here tonight, and thank you to all the residents for being here. I think this is the fullest we've seen the council chambers in a long time. Definitely the fullest we've seen it since the, at least for a council meeting, since we renovated the chambers. So I have a couple of questions. They may be, I'm a little slow sometimes, so they may be questions that have been asked already, but I just want to be really clear about some of these things. So I just want to be clear. Is it illegal for the state to pave a road that doesn't own? So it would be illegal for you guys to pave 410 as long as the city owned it? Is that correct?
The way that I would term it is, we do not have the legal authority to do it. So I guess if you want to say it's illegal, yes, that's correct.
So since before I was born, you guys have been breaking the law?
But I admitted to earlier.
The second question is related to how many lane miles, just, you know, roughly, do you think run through municipalities where the municipality owns the road? You could even just give me like a rough percentage of lane miles that run through municipalities where the municipalities own the road compared to all the lane miles that the state owns and maintains? I imagine it's like a very small fraction.
I honestly don't know, but it is a very small fraction. I just asked for some examples today. I did not ask for a complete interview.
But I imagine it's like-
It's a very small number.
A small, very small fraction. And then, I just want to ask a question to clarify something else you said, which I heard generally, you generally do not make funds available for municipalities to pay, federal funds to pave their roads. And I just wanted to understand, is that, is it illegal for you all to make, or do you not have the legal authority to make those funds available, or is it just a general policy decision?
It's more of a policy decision. The notable exception is the city of Baltimore, which does not have any state highways in it, other than the toll roads. So they do get a portion of the federal funds because they own and maintain all of the roadways that would be the equivalent of state highways in Baltimore, but that is the, that is the only exception.
So you could change the policy decision and decide for that very small percentage of roads that are owned by municipalities, that you would be willing to give the municipalities funds to maintain those, federal funds to maintain those roads that they own that happen to be state highways?
If that policy decision was made, it was, it would be possible. I think there would be some policy implications of that that would be undesirable, but it would not, it would be possible for that to take place. I will tell you that use of federal funds is, for highway improvements, is far, far, far more complicated than using local or state funds. And we did make some of the American Recovery and Reinvestment Act money available to local jurisdictions. That was a decision that the governor made. I will tell you now, a year and a half later, we still don't have all those monies obligated, all those projects underway, because the local jurisdictions just don't know how to go through all of the red tape and all of the procedural hurdles that are associated with federal funds. It is far preferable that state funds be made available to local jurisdictions in lieu of federal funds. That has been our policy for the entire 28 years I've been the state highway administration.
But you've just said you can't, it's, if we own the road, it's, you don't have the legal authority to do that with state funds, correct?
We make, well, up until the last two years, we made 30% of the highway user revenues available to local jurisdictions to be using. And then there was another category of funds that were made available that were to be spent by the local jurisdictions, however they, they wanted to be spending it, not for specific designated programs. That money still is made available through the counties, and some of that money gets passed out to municipalities.
Okay. You know, I'm, I'm a little slow sometimes, like I said, but it does seem that there would be a way to give us money to maintain the road that happens to be a state highway. It seems like it's been done either through federal funds or state funds, and I'm not a lawyer. Our Senator Raskin's a great lawyer who's here, so maybe he could help us figure out a way to do that. But it does seem that there would be a way, if there was a desire to do that, there would be a way to do that.
I think the question you just asked was different than the one I thought that you previously asked. The question you just asked was, is there a way that state money could be made available to a municipality to maintain a state highway?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry, I misunderstood. I thought the previous question was, is there a way that we could make federal or state money available for municipalities to maintain a municipally-owned roadway? So I'm sorry, I misunderstood the previous question.
A municipally-owned roadway that also happens to be a state highway?
Well, you mean designated or signed as a state highway. It would not be a state highway if we didn't own it.
So you could, so you should take your signs down?
US-11 through Hagerstown is not a state highway, but it is signed as US-11. Maryland 410 through Tacoma Park is not a state highway, even though it is signed as Maryland 410.
Okay, so you couldn't give us federal funds, I'll go back, then, you couldn't give us federal funds to maintain a municipal road?
As a matter of policy, that is correct.
It's a policy, though. It's not, there's not a, but it is a, it is a, you don't have the legal authority to give us state funds to do it?
That is correct.
Okay.
That is correct. You're not very slow. You're asking very insightful questions.
So that is actually very, very helpful to me, because that leaves me convinced, if there is a will on this issue, for the city to maintain ownership of the road and have the state use funds that are available to it, it might be federal funds, to, that there's a way to get it solved. And I realize there's maybe some municipalities that have trouble with the red tape of federal procurement. I think our city manager and public works director would be quite able in that area to work through the issues. I think the solar panels on the roof of this building actually are federal-funded. They may have less strings attached, but. So I just have a couple other questions.
Can I just remind you real quick that when, when, when we did get some stimulus funding, federal funding, I believe the public works director and the city manager said, oh, please, don't make us go through that again.
And I will attest to the fact that federal funds for solar panels and roofs are far, far easier to administer than federal highway funds.
Michael, I just want to clarify also about the rules of what we can, if we own the road, what we can do to it in terms of traffic calming and signage. So does that mean we can put up stop signs where we want on the road that we own?
Again, you are obligated, as we are, to meet the requirements of the manual and uniform traffic control devices. As long as the requirements of the manual and uniform traffic control devices are met, then you make the decision where they go.
Okay. I'll be reading that manual later.
It will put you to sleep pretty quickly.
It's worse than before, I must question.
You mentioned, I just want to go a little bit now to the process by which, what would have to occur if the state actually did want to widen. You mentioned a lot of people taking votes. I can't even remember all of them, but does the city council actually have any final say in whether that widening would happen, the city council?
In the process of priority setting for major capacity enhancement projects, no. That's a state process. For the National Historic Preservation Act process and the Section 4 process, you are considered a major stakeholder whose view is very important in terms of the final decision that gets made. The final decision that gets made in those cases is the Department of Interior for the Federal Act, and the State Historic Preservation Office here for the State Act, and the federal highway administration for Section 4.
And then, is there any way you could write, or put in writing and commit to a legally binding agreement to not widen 410, or basically, would that be a violation of state law or beyond the state highway's authority?
It's something that, as state highway administrator, I would not be prepared to do, even if I had the legal authority to do it.
And why is that?
It's a policy precedent that, once it is done in one location, there would be tremendous pressure to be doing it all over the state. And it's something that none of my predecessors have done, and something I'm not prepared to do.
And then, lastly, I think I'll just make a few comments. You know, I think it's pretty clear that you said, you know, there's, there's all the way to the Supreme Court, that there's case law that kind of dictates particularly related to historic preservation. But if we think about this as a glacial battle, which Lorraine Pierceall, an activist in the community, reminded me about recently, case law does change over time. Sometimes it changes very rapidly, as we saw recently around federal funding, I mean, funding of ads and elections, like, it can change quite rapidly overnight. So I agree that it would be a lot of stars that would have to align for you guys to ever be allowed to widen the road, but it is not impossible. And to me, the crux of the issue really comes down to whether we think there's any substantive value to us owning the road in preventing the state from widening it if they chose to do so. And it seems that there may not be significant legal value in that, but I do think that there would be significant political and media value in the fact that the state would be coming to a municipality and saying that they're taking a road against the will of that municipality. Has that ever happened in the state of Maryland, or is it always, is this, are the municipalities always willing when you all come to take a road? Have you ever? No, I don't mean to make that a-
No, I understand your question. Certainly during the seven and a half years that I have been administrator, I can't think of an example where it has happened.
Would it make you-
But I, you know, state highway administration's 102 years old now, so I don't remember that far back.
Would it make you sort of uncomfortable if that were the situation, if you were coming to a municipality and taking a road against its will for a state highway issue?
We try as hard as possible to try to come to consensus-based decisions when, when we make decisions regarding significant roadway improvements. So yes, it would make me uncomfortable, but- So yes, it would make me uncomfortable, but if I had a municipality that was, I felt irrationally preventing us from doing something that was really needed from a safety perspective, I might say that the safety policy issue overrides what the municipality is saying.
And I'm, I just, lastly, I just want to say, I think that we should decouple the decisions. I know there's some implications about precedent, but I'm very supportive of Councilmember Snippers' word and desire to improve Flower Avenue, and I think it's a much different situation. I do agree that it's no longer really functions as a state highway. And I do think we should take the opportunity for the state, the city, and the county to work in a way that would improve that road. And I have serious concerns about turning over the ownership of the road, given that I feel like, as I said before, where there's the will, there's a way, it sounds like, under different funding sources, so things.
That's what we're...
Thank you for coming tonight and being so amiable in your answers. And I would say that, having heard your comments, which have been instructive, I'm feeling a little bit more hopeful that there's a solution here, that we just sort of need to figure out what it looks like. So I want to go back to your comments about precedents with municipalities, where the state highways run up to the boundary, the labeling of the state highway goes through the municipality, but the highway that runs through the town or city is, in fact, owned by the town or the city and maintained by the town or the city. I also want you to understand that I greatly, I do understand your need to be careful about precedent, to protect precedent. But, well, I think, though, that we have all the precedent, or you have all the precedent you need with regard to helping us get Ethan Allen paved, and that is, of course, the fact that never, probably nowhere else in the state of Maryland has there been a case where the state assumed that it owned a piece of property for 56 years, 54, and then just found out that it didn't, and then all of a sudden, of course, realized that, in fact, gosh, we really can't repair this road, that prior to that time, you had, the state highway administration had allowed it to go to heck, to put it nicely.
I will say, I certainly hope there aren't any other cases like that.
I will make a wager. I think I might come out on top on that. So, you know, so if another municipality came along and said to you, hey, gosh, you guys struck a deal with the folks over in Tacoma Park, we want the same one, which is your concern, then, you know, I think we've got something to kind of insulate the state highway administration a little bit. And also, as it refers to Flower Avenue as well, because we're in a pickle, the city is, we've got a road here that we own, and it's in dreadful condition, but not for any other reason than what the state chose to do with it or not to do with it. And if we were to repair it, it's going to cost us actual money, which we're not rolling in. Of course, you're not rolling in any money either, I understand that. But with regard to the municipal cities in the state, where they own this quote "state highway," and they maintain it because you can't, because you don't actually literally have title to it, I guess, either I'm awfully dumb or something, but I don't understand why we can't do that here. Right now, the whole argument up to this point in time is, we've been talking about an agreement whereby we could cede our ownership to the state so that you would have continuous ownership from the eastern boundary all the way to the western boundary of Route 410. Why not do just the opposite? Why don't you turn over to the city full ownership across from boundary line to boundary line, and then we don't have to worry about whether or not you're going to widen it? I mean, we realize that, setting aside the fact that we, all of us in this room realizes that there could always be some kind of circumstance where the state might need to do that, but I can't think of any. And I, but understand that I think most of the people sitting in this room waiting to testify, or at least to listen, are here because of that fear. And we wouldn't have a room full of these people here, wonderful citizens, thank the Lord you're here, but for that concern. I mean, there's other issues that we need to be talking about. But it just seems to me that if you let us take ownership of that whole piece of road, you still have it labeled as Route 410, everybody uses it, still makes the same progress that they did the day before yesterday in driving through it, but at least we have the responsibility and the cost, but the control over its maintenance and its permitting, and to ensure that the stop signs and the traffic lights are all done to state standards, and that if it needs repairing and paving, we do it, not you. And so, just as apparently I heard you talk about how it's done in other municipalities, I mean, we've already gone out and obtained an estimate on what it would cost us to, as Councilman Clay pointed out earlier, to find out what it would cost for us to actually repair our stretch of Ethan Allen Avenue. So let me pause there and just ask you, am I in a wild goose chase here, going off into the woods in the wrong direction, or am I following something, a course of reasoning that makes sense?
If I'm understanding you correctly, and the city chose to continue to maintain ownership and assume all costs associated with whatever repairs need to be made, I have plenty of other places that I can be spending the estimated 1.2 to 1.5 million dollars. And we can walk out and you continue to maintain the roadway and own it.
And this would be...
That was not the issue that was brought to me, however.
Right. No, I understand that it was not.
What was, is there a way that state highway administration can repair and repay the roadway, and for us to do it, we need to own it?
You're right. That is, in fact, the question that was brought to you, because, well, we don't need to go back over the history, that's already been explained. But I'm just sort of wanting to flip the thing upside down and sort of look at it from a different perspective. You mentioned that it would cost, save you over a million dollars, but that's what, doing the repair from New Hampshire Avenue all the way through Ethan, across Carroll, down Philadelphia, all the way to the other side of the city, is that what you're talking about?
No, that's just the portions that the city owns.
That's just the portions that the city owns?
Correct.
Okay. Because that's different, substantially different than what we thought we were going to pay to be able to repair Ethan Allen Avenue. Just Ethan Allen Avenue, substantially less than that.
Our portion includes Philadelphia Avenue, and I suspect may include more than, in fact, I'm sure, certainly includes more than just paving, because when we go in and do a project of this type, for example, we have to make sure that all ADA standards are met.
Sure.
And that can be a fairly substantial part of the cost.
Now, I would think we would want to go to those same standards, certainly with the ADA, because, Lord knows, we're spending a good deal of speed camera money on our sidewalks throughout the city, or at least have started that process of getting them all ADA conforming. So we would want to do that as well. Now, with regard to Flower Avenue, you raised the concern, which I greatly understand as well, that, you know, this is a budget year, the money's allocated or been to take for the state to repair Flower Avenue, and therefore, if you were to give this money to the city, you'd have to know that the city was going to be doing it right away and not sort of, like you said, banking the money. Our staff has already worked up a timetable whereby we could get this whole process, including the annexation of that little piece of the public right of way that we don't own, on the other side of Flower Avenue, that we could get all that done by March. With, is that right?
Well, not do all the work.
Not do all the work, but I mean, but on the same timeline that you were talking about in terms of 410, which you said you would like to get it all ready to start construction by March, we can do the same thing here on Flower Avenue and probably do both roads, you know, so we hit that same time schedule. So we already know that, we've figured that out ourselves.
Well, I guess my understanding was that, the thinking was that Flower Avenue would be reconstructed as a green street. Engineering has not been done on that. You have an awfully talented staff, if they could go through the entire process, get all the engineering done, it'd be underway by March with a green street on Flower Avenue.
It would take longer than that, Susie said.
So I stand corrected on that. But the point is, is that we're ready to move with alacrity, is that the word? You know, on that thing, and I think we can...
I am prepared to say that we would commit to the money being available when you are ready for the work to start.
Right. And I think we already know that. Susie Ludlow pointed out that the money would be there as soon as we're ready to go or reach these certain bench, these time marks. See if there was anything else I wanted to comment on. I guess the only thing I want to say is not so much a question, but a comment, and that is that, you know, in the 1920s, 30s, and 40s, there was a guy in New York City by the name of Robert Moses, who was the head of the state city parks department, then became head of this port authority. And he went around building the East Side Highway, the West Side Highway, a number of cross-town highways through Manhattan and tunnels and all that, and they all did it without public hearings. But that was also true of how civil rights got conducted in the United States, or the lack of it. And I think that in the 50 years since all those kinds of things got done, that those kind of ways have been abandoned, in many ways, in our federal government system. I do think that we've gone way past the point of state and federal highway administrators figuring that they can just sort of roll in and do whatever they need to do, and the citizens are going to be quiescent. We know that's just not going to happen. And so, I have been impressed by your comments with regard to the historic zones, some of the precedent, or the laws that are set up, that I was not aware of, that helps protect historic areas, and some of the other regulations that you talk about. But notwithstanding that, notwithstanding any of those things, I do think that the overwhelming concern here is how do we protect our city from a potential state widening, long after you and I have gone to our happy hunting grounds? Because, you know, the younger generations are going to be coming along and just don't want to have to go through the same fights that we went through in the 1960s and the 70s over highways running through our cities and civil rights being trampled, as sort of an analogy. So I thank you for your time and your really good answers to many of these questions, have been very helpful. Thank you very much.
If I could just comment, Robert Carroll wrote an excellent 1,200-page biography of Robert Moses, which I have encouraged my staff to read as a way not to do business.
And I have read it.
He did?
I lost my sound here.
It's all right, we're going to Councilmember Stevens.
Thank you, Mayor, and I'm going to try to get this meeting over before we all go to the happy hunting grounds. And, you know, I made a list of questions, a couple pages long, before coming to meeting, and I have that list here, but fortunately, I've been able to strike most of those questions because my colleagues have asked them already and you've given us answers, appreciate that. I just have two questions remaining, although I do want to duplicate some that they, comments that they've made, such as thanking you for coming here and spending the hours with us tonight, and also to say that I do support decoupling the projects, I think it makes the decisions easier. But my two questions are, one is, do you think there's a possibility that a future state administrator might be less considerate of municipal resistance to widening highways than what you are?
I can't imagine that he or she would remain in office very long.
Okay. And given the difficult economic times we're in and the possibility that may not be a purple line completed in the near future, or maybe other pressures on east-west travel through the county, can you foresee there might be a need to widen 410 at some time in the future?
The policy of this administration, and it's actually been the policy of every administration that I have worked for, and I've been here 28 years now, so seven administrations, has been that inside the Beltway, in both Montgomery and Prince George's Counties, we are trying to provide additional capacity via transit and through demand management, and not through widening of highways. And it's been quite a few years since you can point to a highway widening project. Certainly in Montgomery County, I think we can point to one in Prince George's County, and that was the extension of Route 410 to New Carrollton, which had been in their plans for many, many years. But other than that, I can't think of any.
All right, thank you.
And I'll just thank you as well and say I had my own list of questions as well, and there's only one that I want to ask, and if you have a simple answer, great, and if you don't, get back to me. And that is, if we're responsible for maintenance of sidewalks on all state highways in Tacoma Park, how can we be expected to manage that without the ability to issue permits, oversee the work, collect the bonds, and sign off on the quality of the work?
We're willing to work jointly with you in terms of the work on sidewalks, but ultimately, if it is in right of way that we own, we are the permit holder.
Okay. Thank you. And just a quick chance to see if the city attorney has anything that you want to share with us, and what I'm looking at is the very beginning of your short answer on your legal and confidential memo that we got this evening.
Thank you, Mayor. Of course, I also want to thank you for coming. I've been trying to talk to your staff for the last several hours, and I do want to know, we have had trouble figuring out some of the ownership issues, it's not transparent. Who is the guru within your office who might walk us through the kind of ownership, we're not sure if it's by deed or if it's by some kind of designation of right of way? What is, how do we go about understanding what your findings are? Because I understand that the deputy city manager's map is just basically assuming that you're correct, and my job is not to assume that.
I think our office of real estate is in the lead. I think our office of real estate is in the lead in terms of issues of actual ownership of the right-of-way, but they work very closely with the attorney general's office, and I think that on this issue, I would probably want you to be working with both of them.
Maybe afterward I can get the names and numbers of those people. You mentioned the whole idea of the shared maintenance responsibility as being a concept that is actually practiced in certain examples. What about the possibility of concurrent jurisdiction or joint ownership of 410?
I am not aware of any instances where we have that, but we can certainly take that back as a question.
I appreciate that. Thank you. We have had the experience not only of not getting the maintenance of 410 because of this sort of confusion or mistake for 54 years, but I must say, I've been told that we haven't had the permitting authority for many, many issues for many years because it is a state highway. Tonight, we're finding out, it sounds, that that designation of state highway is not the controlling factor if there's not ownership. Is that correct?
That's correct. If, as I said, we have a number of instances where the route is signed through a municipality, but roadway is not owned or maintained by city administration.
So what you're explaining to us tonight is that if the city council decides to keep ownership of its portions of 410, that we'll also have full control of all these permitting issues?
Correct.
That would be a huge change. Thank you. And then lastly, because I want the city council, I don't make the decisions, I just try to get the options on the table, I'd like you to explain a little bit, you told us that you would not be willing to sign an enforceable covenant or document that would say 410 would not be widened. Would you be interested in looking at covenants that might require a certain procedural kind of context? For example, that the city council would have to sign off on something to try to get around? In other words, if we can't agree to the substance, could we maybe agree to the process as a condition of giving over any kind of ownership?
We can discuss process issues. I think city sign-off is more the process than I think that substance. But we can certainly talk about process issues, process options.
Mr. Mayor, did you want me to ask something else?
I just, I just wanted to, I was interested in your, the very first part of your short answer in your memo, and I just wanted to kind of, that ties back to a part of what Councilmember Wright was talking about, and I just wanted to kind of, have you state that, because I thought it was a very interesting twist to things.
I'm frankly not sure which you're asking me to do, so why don't you?
Okay. I just thought it was interesting that in your memo, you said that if the city retains ownership interest in Route 410, then it'll be a necessary party to the state's condemnation action if the state were to go that route and had to file in circuit court for Montgomery County to obtain ownership of the city portion.
I agree with that statement.
So that, so that if we retain ownership and if in the future the state were to want to condemn 410, to take 410 by eminent domain, the city would of necessity be part of the suit that the state would file to do that. So we would kind of be?
A party.
A party, we would be a party doing something against us that we didn't want to do.
Well, the other, the other question there is what I was getting at at the beginning of my questions of the administrator, which is, it also partly depends what kind of ownership interest we have, which isn't yet totally clear.
Okay. That's helpful. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
If I could just say, I want to express my appreciation particularly to Ms. Ludlow for the constant communication that we have had over the last several days in helping me much better understand the issues so that we could, we could have the quality dialogue that we had. So thank you, Suzanne.
Thank you. Councilwoman Cleo, you had a quick follow-up?
Yes. So there's an entire paragraph to that short answer, and you read the first sentence, but the second to the last sentence is, therefore, the city's continued ownership of portions of Route 410 would not cause a clear delay to the state's efforts in court to widen Route 410. So even though we're a party to it, all those eminent domain things still remain the same. It just makes us the party that's being condemned.
Right, right.
It also has to do with the issue of the quick-take procedure, which makes the emphasis be on the appraisal of the property and the money rather than the sort of preliminary question of should it be taken?
Which is nicely outlined on their SHA pamphlet on eminent domain and condemnation of your property.
Okay.
With color photos.
I think if possible, this memo is called legal and confidential, but I think if the city attorney means it appropriate and makes sure there's nothing that needs to be sanitized from it, I think it would be actually very helpful to make this available to the public. I think the legal issue here is confusing, and I think the memo actually does a very good job about kind of laying out the legal issue as well as the, what that means not only just in the court, but also in the court of public opinion and politically, which I think would be helpful for people. I was glad finally to get this. I was a little surprised. I had assumed that what we had heard so far about the legal opinions related to this had been through consultation with you, but that wasn't the case, and I'm very happy to finally have this memo.
This is our first time that we're giving an opinion. The question of whether it's privileged is entirely that of the council's, not mine.
Right.
So the council would have to vote on that.
Right. So we can do that, and I would say that after we had a chance to read the whole thing, we could decide to release that. We have had various people sign up to speak, and we want to give you that opportunity. I'm sorry it's taken us until 9:48 to get there, but I hope the back and forth that we have had has elucidated some of the points that might have been confusing for us and for you, and so that it might help to make your comments more helpful and clearer to all of us. And so we'll go through the list, and Catherine Wakeland was the first to sign up, followed by Robert Lanza and Buddy Daniels.
I'm Catherine Wakeland. I live at 7218. Can you hear me?
No.
Not yet.
Is the mic wrong? Actually, my question is for Mr. Peterson, and he went and sat down. Could he get back to the microphone place? I wanted to thank Councilman Wright and everybody else, actually, because, because most of my questions have been answered, and I have to confess that I came here tonight feeling like Charlie Brown on the opening day of football season and wondering if the football was going to be yanked out from under the city of Tacoma Park one more time, and that still is a concern of mine. But I think that Councilman Nipper pointed out the fact that trust is one of the major concerns that we have here, and I think that you've already answered that as a matter of policy, if not legal authority, neither the state highway administration nor the, nor MDOT would agree to make this surrender of the Maryland portion, of the municipal portions of Maryland Route 410 contingent on the state's agreement not to widen the road without the consent and approval of the mayor and council of Tacoma Park. Is that correct?
Certainly, as a matter of policy, I would have to check with my attorneys in terms of legal issues.
Okay. Okay. The other thing I wanted to ask you, and it was brought up just by Councilman Schultz and his, or maybe, maybe actually it was the city attorney's questioning, you mentioned the possibility, there was a possibility of concurrent jurisdiction mentioned, and you said that you were willing to take that issue back. And my question is, take that back to whom and who in the SHA or MDOT would have the final authority to approve or disapprove a notion of, or a concept of concurrent jurisdiction over Maryland Route 410? And would that be based on a legal authority, or would that, again, be based on policy?
If it is within legal parameters, I would have that done with.
You would? Okay. Thank you.
I do know that we have examples. For example, Wisconsin Avenue in Bethesda is jointly maintained by Montgomery County and by state highway administration. So there are examples. I'm not familiar with the legal parameters of that.
Okay. Thank you very much. I guess, well, my time's up.
No, no, you've got 30 seconds.
Convenient. I'm through, but thank you very much.
Perfect. And if, if the other people whose names I mentioned, as I mention your names, if you want to get up and get ready to come up here so we can move through it, Robert Lanza, Buddy Daniels, and either John or Von Vaughn.
Yes, I'm Robert Lanza, 7215 Cedar Avenue. I'd like to thank the members of the council for their very informed and informative questions on this issue. I'd like to thank my council member, Josh, particularly, for becoming involved in this and asking very good questions. I had a couple of questions myself. There's been a lot of discussion with respect to the transfer of 410 from city ownership to state ownership. I had a question about the other end of this process, about Flower Avenue. My question is whether there's any precedent for municipalities owning and maintaining roads that are outside of the city boundaries. We're talking about a situation where there will be parts of Flower Avenue that aren't within Tacoma Park that we would be responsible as a city for owning and maintaining if this whole process goes through. And I'm wondering, why isn't that part of Flower Avenue becoming a carry road if it's not within Tacoma Park? Suzanne Ludlow explained a little bit about the process with the sidewalks and et cetera, and I'd like a little more information concerning, why are we making a transfer that takes roads that are not within the boundaries of Tacoma Park and making it something that we are responsible for?
The two lanes of Flower Avenue are within the city boundaries of the city of Tacoma Park, as is one sidewalk. The only portion that's not within the city of Tacoma Park is the portion between the roadway and the Silver Spring property owners' property lines. The proposal that's being considered is to annex the rest of the right-of-way so that the full width of the right-of-way would be within the city boundaries of the city of Tacoma Park. In 1996, the road, the boundary was down the center line of Flower Avenue. There were complaints by the neighbors that there wasn't, our city, they wanted the city to police department to be able to enforce laws on both lanes, and so we annexed the other lane. And it has caused a little bit of confusion because of the small, small portion of land that's left between the city boundary and the Silver Spring property lines.
So we're really talking about overtaking the ownership of the sidewalks then? And that's something that Montgomery County has been neglecting?
Absolutely.
Okay. My last question is, is Montgomery County getting a free lunch here? That, you know, we're taking over something that they're responsible for? We have a lot of issues in Tacoma Park with doing stuff that the county's supposed to be doing.
Yes, as I mentioned at the beginning, the work for basically creating a sidewalk on the eastern side of Flower Avenue is in the county CIP for 2016. The, the direction from council, and it's what I would have done anyway, is to ensure that, that a commitment from the county be part of this work.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Buddy Daniels, John or Von Vaughn, Richard Levine, Dan Goodman.
Good evening.
Buddy Daniels is next.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry? You're next.
In the interest of time, I'm going to yield my time to the other participants. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Now you go.
Now, good evening. My concern is, I have been a resident of Tacoma Park for 43 years. Forty-three years ago, I bought my home. In that home, I brought up eight children, and I'm acquainted with the shift of responsibility in the city of Tacoma Park, from the state to the city, and from the city to the state. I have to say, minus commenting and complaining, because I'm on the corridor of Philadelphia Avenue, and when I moved into my home, there were no buses, no tractor-trailers, except you were moving into the neighborhood or moving out of the neighborhood. There were no heavy vehicles rolling down those roads. Those roads stayed pretty good for a long time, until we started to get transportation, and now transportation is worse than it has ever been, and I have to literally fight and get a blood pressure to get out of my driveway. And it's because of the head of traffic that the walls in my home have had haline breaks in it. I've had to cover my walls with paneling. The quality of life as I once knew it is not the same today. And then we talk about originality, we talk about historical district. Well, what's historical? When I moved here, as I mentioned, there were no heavy vehicles. If we're going to be historical district, we should keep it historical, keep it quiet. The quality of life should be improved. So I see that SHA will initiate a project to patch around and overlay. Overlay with what? As I mentioned, as I heard one of the gentlemen mention here, regardless of what you do, the roads are not going to last, and unless you do it, the concrete asphalt is out of the question. So what are we going to overlay it with? That's question number one. Upon completion of the pavement improvement work on 410, the city will transfer ownership of this portion to SHA. Now, in doing so hypothetically, what if the state says, well, we want to widen the highway, widen this highway, four lanes? What's going to happen to the residents? And in my home, I have precious memories, and I don't think there's any amount of money that could buy those memories and replace. I don't know whether that means my time is up or what.
Yes. So if you're going to wrap up your council space.
But I do want to know, if the city is going to own, can we get, if it's a city own instead of a state own, can we get speed bump? If not, can we get speed cameras? Because also, we have enormous traffic racing up and down the streets, and my daughter was hit and thrown up in the yard by a driver that passed over the double line. With no buses running at that time, she was coming from Sunday school, and she was crossing the street. A driver was restless, didn't want to wait, came up, knocked her off, directed her to Washington Advent Hospital. She had chip on in her knees, and today she has problems from that.
Thanks, thanks very much.
And should the state decide? The other thing is, it's stated here in number three that SHA has no plan to revise the number of through-lanes or major transportation features of 410. So if they don't have it now, my question is, what about later? Is it in the future? Those things are important to know. Because if the law should carry and I live, my children will inherit my own, I don't want them to have to worry about that. I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Richard Levine, Dan Goodman, Seth Grimes, Claire De Labor.
Hi. I guess I'm, I can be heard. My name is Richard Levine, and I live on the corner of Cedar and 410. And first of all, I'd like to thank the county council for, city council, of course, for the, some of the creative solutions they've come up with, which don't involve ceding 410 to the state. And I also heard a comment that if the city were to sign off on something like that, that would be a matter of substance, which I found interesting, that I don't know if I clearly heard or understood that, but that would be a substantive, the type of action for the city to actually cede part of its the city to actually cede part of its control. Also, I was pleased to hear, because there's so many traffic problems on 410, that the city has much more jurisdiction and control over the traffic issues there than I initially thought. And this could be a great benefit for us to keep control of the city, if we could actually could set up means to have the traffic more under our control. And I'm sure there are a lot of ideas in that regard. But I'd like to get to the point that we must learn from history. 410 is not the same as Flower and Piney Branch. It's an important traffic artery. It's much more likely, or it is likely to be, the target of expansion. The issue has never totally disappeared. It always seems to rear up. We've seen that many counties, many communities in our country have been ruined by road widening. 410 is at the very heart of Tacoma Park. You don't put at risk your survival for short-term gains. There must be more creative ways to finance road repairs than having 410 held hostage to road repairs and ceded as ransom. And my concern is, if the city council of Tacoma Park won't defend the interests of the citizenry by throwing up obstacles to widening 410, why should we hope for the state to be more responsive? And I, I think these fights, as all activists can attest, have, are very tough when you're fighting tough, when you're fighting money, development, interest. One of which, the most influential and powerful, is the highway construction industry. And we need every means at our disposal to help fight in these types of situations. So, I'd like to conclude saying that ownership of 410 is one of those means at our disposal to prevent road widening. And the issue of widening 410 only lies dormant, it never seems to really die, and we should not cede a vital defense for preserving our community, and we should not cede ownership of 410.
Dan Goodman, Seth Grimes, Claire De Labor, Cliff Schwartz.
Hello, my name is Dan Goodman. Thank you very much for taking the time to hear from us. I live on Philadelphia Avenue. I guess I was hoping to just say a few things about my concerns about this proposal, and then ask a few questions or a few concerns about the clauses. I'm a homeowner on Philadelphia Avenue, and I'm opposed to this proposal. Some of my concerns are that I think that the transfer would limit the city's ability to influence future changes on the road. And I think it was very actually illuminating that the city has more control over 410 than I realized before tonight. And as long as we're following the M U T C D, there's actually a lot of flexibility, and that is something that we would lose if we transferred this road. I'm concerned about S.H.A.'s history of prioritizing motor vehicles over pedestrians and bikes. I think that transferring ownership would limit, would limit, one impediment to widening the road. I would urge you, just remind you that master plans and comprehensive plans change. I think it's irresponsible to rely on, on the fact that the widening is not in that comp plan now. And I think that it's, you know, just because it's politically difficult today doesn't mean that it will be that way tomorrow. I think that we should decouple Flower, the Flower Avenue project also. Some of the concerns that I have about the clauses, I'm concerned that the language of the clause would give little recourse, that the city will only be consulted about a change. I'm concerned that that would give the city little recourse if there's a fundamental disagreement about the future of the road. I'm concerned that, you know, I think that, that I would like to learn more about why we can't have a clause as part of this agreement that Tacoma Park wouldn't, has to approve the change as opposed to just being consulted. I'd like to know if we can add a clause that, that would require S.H.A. to follow its own bike and pedestrian guidelines as part of any transfer. I guess I'd like to, to explore whether we could also include improvements to Piney Branch in Philadelphia as part of any proposal. And I'd like to know if there are other, any other S.H.A. planning designations that we could possibly implement as part of a transfer. And I guess finally, I'd like to know more about this, the shared maintenance agreement. I'd like to, to have a better understanding myself of the long and the, the short and the long-term implications of the proposed change. And that would be for the city and for the residents, and also S.H.A. And as part of that, I'd like a kind of a comparative analysis of this shared maintenance agreement and, and why this proposal on the table is better than that. And I've yet to be convinced. So, until we have that in a better public process, I would urge you to, at the very least, delay any decisions passed tonight. So, thank you very much.
Seth Grimes, Claire De Labor, Cliff Schwartz, Paul Kristowski. Seth's still here?
Yeah.
His birthday? His wife's birthday. Happy birthday. Claire De Labor?
Hi, thank you for the opportunity. I'm a homeowner on Philadelphia Avenue. My previous neighbor was the late Ada Benak at 212 Philadelphia Avenue. She had been an original owner of her home since the early 1950s and had warned me of the many times the state had tried to widen 410. So, I just wanted to ask why council felt it important back in those days to keep ownership of 410, and whether or not that still applies, probably so, and do we fully understand those reasons? Because they had wisdom in those times. While it seems that there's some uncertainty about the benefit of ownership based on the type of ownership and questions that are raised tonight, it seems as though the only example that's been given of widening inside the Beltway has been 410, albeit in PG County, which as a homeowner on 410 is rather frightening. I wonder if the council in their risk assessment, because I know there's a lot of talk of finances and repairing roads and who pays for what, have you looked at the risk assessment of if eminent domain took away 30 or 40 homes on Philadelphia and Ethan Avenue and the loss of the tax base of property taxes, personal income taxes on everyone who lives there? Those are risks that are inherent in your analysis of what the finances would do, if you want to just look at it from who's going to pay for what. So, I just wanted to put that out there as possibilities. Thank you.
Thank you. And if people can kind of make their way out and line up so we move everybody as fast as possible. Cliff Schwartz, Paul Kristowski, Frederick Baron.
Hi, Cliff Schwartz, I would like to thank the council for being here. I would like to thank the administrator for actually being here as well. I think that takes a lot of courage. Thank you very much. I'm originally from New York. I remember when they were building the Garden State Parkway, and we were told that when the Garden State Parkway tolls paid for that road, it will become free. It was paid for, and it never became free. This is public record. So, I mean no disrespect, but Reagan said it himself, "Trust and verify." I think there is a lot of value in putting in writing, in some appropriate form somehow, I'm not an attorney, that when the state says, "We do not intend to widen Ethan Allen," unless there were reasons for safety, this can be put in writing. I didn't hear any illegality about that, just policy. And I think that that's one possibility. The other thing I would like to say is, I live on Ethan Allen, between Carroll and New Hampshire. I know Ethan Allen. We live there. We hear the bumps in the night. We already had a blowout on our tire. We hear swerves. We hear cars going into the potholes. It's dangerous. And I want to emphasize the danger of Ethan Allen now. I also want to emphasize that that road is used by ambulances constantly. It is used by fire trucks constantly. And that wear and tear on that road goes outside of Tacoma Park for safety reasons to help other counties. I think that the county, after 54 years, has a moral responsibility to fix that road in some form of cooperation. And if they can't because of policy, though I heard that it is not illegal, and Josh Wright, I applaud your slowness, I would love to wheel in more and more of that slowness, and thank you for bringing it up. But I think that if there is some cooperation that can be made, like you referenced, sir, with Wisconsin fine, and if there is policy that absolutely can't change, I will come, I offer this other novel solution that I didn't hear. And it goes like this. Tacoma Park can yield to the county Ethan Allen 410, so they will then own it, they could repair it, and they can then give it back to Tacoma Park, and then they will be responsible for it after that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Paul Kristowski, Frederick Baron, Diana Kohn, Julian Alderburn.
Paul Kristowski, 7708 Tacoma Avenue. Delegate Mazur said that she'd like to hear some elements of, of history, so I'd like to share a little bit of that history with you. For close to 20 years, I have lived near that portion of Route 410, which is apparently still owned by the state of Maryland. It's not on that map as one being part of the city, Tacoma Park. My neighbors and I have been concerned about many issues over this period of time. Some of these have to do with widening. We talked a lot about widening tonight. The purple line was scheduled to go down that road. Many issues had to do with safety. We have what is probably the worst crosswalk in the city of Tacoma Park, where hundreds of students from Montgomery College have to cross Route 410 daily in front of buses with an unmaintained crosswalk. We have issues of, we have a higher speed limit on that portion of 410 than the rest of Tacoma Park. We have issues with guardrails. I could go on and on. Quite a few years ago, when Larry Rubin was on the city council, some of you may remember, Councilman Rubin, he convened a citizens committee of all of us who were interested in problems with having to do with Route 410. We met with the city. The city staff told us, "Well, this is a state problem. We can't help you out." Councilman Rubin got some people from the state to come out to, visit with us. And I suppose they consulted with us, so that's the context of the language being used. We told them all our problems. They sat there, they listened to us, they smiled, they said, "Yeah, we'll, we'll take care of it all." They went back to Baltimore or Annapolis or from whence they came. We never heard from them again. We tried many, many follow-up emails and phone calls. All of our issues apparently disappeared into the ether. The citizens finally got worn down, and we really disbanded our effort. What I'm trying to say here is that I don't see why the city would want to give any more of Route 410 to the state, when the state has been totally unresponsive to those of us who have issues, and these are serious public safety issues with that portion of 410 that the state already owns. I would encourage the city not to cede any portion of 410 to the state, and to take back from the state that portion of 410 that the state owns and put it all under city control. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Frederick Baron, Diana Kohn, Julian Alderburn, Jeff Cruck.
Thanks, that's a hard act to follow. Thank you very much to the council and the delegate Mazur and others and the state officials for your constructive engagement on this issue and for seeking the informed consent of affected citizens. Thank you, I really appreciate seeing so many people here on this issue this evening. I think that's rather belated that we're having that opportunity. I first learned about this issue from an anonymous flyer stuck in my door, encouraging me to call my council member and support this proposal without spelling out what it entailed. And it was, it was only Historic Tacoma, and thanks to them as well, who, who let us know, let those of us on that street know about this hearing this evening. I will focus on Ethan Allen Avenue because that's where I live, and I would like to focus on what is necessary and what is possible. It is possible, we have learned, we've heard repeatedly from, from lawyers and others, that it is possible for the state to use eminent domain to widen Maryland 410 through Tacoma Park. It's not necessary, it's not desirable, and we should not do anything whatsoever that will make it easier for that to happen. If city, if city ownership is one, one small hurdle, that's an additional hurdle that the state would have to overcome to widen Maryland 410, we should do that. If we need, if we want to see what the impact is, all we have to do is look at the sections of Maryland 410 to the south of Tacoma Park and to the west of Tacoma Park, and you will see how much of a difference it makes to have a four-lane highway as opposed to a city street. Now, what is necessary is to repave Maryland 410. It is absolutely dangerous. Cars have to swerve around the potholes. They, they sometimes swerve off the roadway. If you're walking down the sidewalk, it can be a little bit dangerous. And what I believe we have learned tonight is that it is indeed possible for the state to repave Ethan Allen Avenue and other parts of Maryland 410, whether they own it or not, as has been done in the past. And it is possible for them to provide funds for the city to repave it. So, we have options there that do not require transferring ownership, and the responsible thing for the state to do in spending our state and federal tax dollars is to provide those funds to maintain the roadway. I'd like to close with a couple minor points, but not unrelated points. One is, whoever is supposed to be holding utilities responsible for the road cuts is doing an abysmal job of it. Anybody that signed off on them, having restored it to its original condition, ought to be fired. Second, one of the other citizens commented on the heavy trucks that are using this as an alternative. When the Beltway gets backed up, we get heavy vehicles coming, cutting through there. I believe we may need a, a weight limit. And finally, this just shows the importance of getting the purple line built so we can have mass transit for east-west transportation. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Diana Kohn, Julian Alderburn, Jeff Cruck, Kathy Brookbill.
Diana Kohn, 16 Jefferson Avenue. I'm president of Historic Tacoma. Transferring ownership of 410 is not a trivial issue, and the deliberation requires extreme care. So, we are particularly grateful that the circle for discussion has been expanded, and we would encourage the city to not move forward with the transfer of ownership at this time. As we have seen tonight, there is much left to be resolved and several new options to be considered. We believe that ownership of the road does present procedural impediments against the potential widening. And we believe, in addition, that the state has an obligation to maintain the road, whether it owns it or not, and the definition of that still remains unclear, and we would like more clarification. We have learned through the history that protections help us survive as a community. The Tacoma Park Historic District, which evolved out of the last 1960s, 70s, and 80s fights over highway widening, has been an important protection against widening in the future. In the opinion of Historic Tacoma, our ability to survive as a long-term community is based on layering one protection on top of another. The city ownership provides yet another layer. Because of where we are located, in the pressures from east to west, the, the, these impediments are more and more important. With respect to safeguarding our community, it is the obligation of all of us, and I think many of the people in the room tonight, understand that obligation, to continue the protection provided by those who went before us, and to the best of our ability, be sure that they remain for those who follow. Thanks.
Thank you. Julian Alderburn, Jeff Cruck, Kathy Brookbill, Dave Della Bedea.
Hi, I'm Julian Alderburn, and I live on Ethan Allen. I'm one of those very courageous souls who brave the noise and the danger and waking up in the middle of the night and having, I'm sure, some of my teeth loosened by having to drive on it every day. I want to thank you all for giving this so much consideration, and I want to thank all of our state House and Senate members for coming tonight. Really, I have very little to add, because there have been so many great, great comments. I'm not so sure that any of the ownership issues are clear I'm not so sure that any of the ownership issues are clearer now than they were before when we started, but at least we know the right questions to ask about it. And as a homeowner, I would very much hate to see Ethan Allen go to the state. If all things are equal in terms of eminent domain, it seems like we have some benefit to hanging on to Ethan Allen because of permitting and, and other things. I do find it a little bit amusing that under traditional legal principles of adverse possession, if my neighbor were cutting my lawn for like seven years or something, and I let them do it, they would actually own that piece of my lawn. So I find it a little bit amusing that the state has been repairing Ethan Allen for 54 years, but doesn't own it. Anyway, that's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Jeff Cruck, Kathy Burkeville, David, David Delabadia, Stephen Kramer.
I live on Woodland, just a short distance from Ethan Allen, and I'd like to thank our State Halle Administrator in particular for coming to the lion's den and meeting with us. Unfortunately, I think he's quite correct in being unwilling to sign any commitments that's probably really not within his jurisdiction to do, unfortunately. I was a little taken aback to hear that the city really has no greater powers against eminent domain than the rest of us, because all my life, I've watched individual homeowners in one place or another, in many different states, effectively have no power, and I was hoping that at least the city would at least have somewhat greater standing. I was also quite puzzled to be told that the issue of widening 410 hadn't really come up. I mean, even before I moved to Tacoma Park and lived elsewhere in the state, I thought east-west highway was a rather mind-boggling exercise where some planner had simply taken a magic marker and run it across the map and declared it a state highway. And if there's no pressure coming from within Tacoma Park to widen it, I can be sure, having been stuck in traffic many a morning and evening, that people from PG County or Montgomery County elsewhere are going to create pressure to widen it. So even though there may be no plans today, there will be plans tomorrow. And so I would definitely encourage the city not to cede ownership. It strikes me as a rather drastic remedy for coming up with money to pave, you know, a few blocks, a little over a mile of street. I mean, it's a tiny fraction, even of all the lane miles within the city, that get maintained without any thought of going to the state for help. It would be fair, since most of the traffic on 410 comes from outside the city, that taxpayers from elsewhere indirectly help subsidize its maintenance, and it does seem like there might be ways for that to happen without going as far as turning over ownership. Given that we own it and have some control over it, I'm kind of curious to know how far that extends. One example, I wouldn't advocate seriously, but just as a example, suppose we were to choose to close it and turn it into a pedestrian mall? Is that something that, you know? Where, where is the boundary actually that ownership provides for control of the street? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Kathy Burkeville.
Hi, I'm Kathy Burkeville. I live on Woodland also, and many of my points have already been addressed. There are a couple, and one of them is, one of the issues or the supposed advantages of gaining flower both sides is that we can maintain the sidewalk on both sides. Ethan Allen does not have sidewalks on both sides, and it really should, because that is a safety issue. The permitting issue that a number of people have raised is in totally a safety issue. And the street damage that exists now, almost every one of those depraters, potholes, whatever you want to call it, was caused by some utility. That road was repaired not very long ago. I don't know the exact dates, probably five years, and should have lasted longer. However, whoever issued those permits to the utilities has not made sure they were correctly put back to their original position. I've lived there for 31 years, and believe me, I know almost every inch of that road. I walk it, I drive it, I cross it, I ride my bike on it, and those problems are not normal maintenance problems. There was a comment made earlier about if the state owns 410, something having to do with water runoff, or, okay. Tacoma Park controls our stormwater, and this also could be another effect on how we're able to keep our stormwater situation under control. There are problems all over, because as you all know, Ethan Allen at that point is on the crest of a hill. All drainage goes down for Woodland, Prince George's, and Elm, and also through those yards into a direct part of, of land that drains into the bay. So how does that work? How do you balance the control of keeping water well-drained off of the highway if the state takes it over, or if we have it? You know, at least if we have it, our stormwater people can look at it and try and address it in a reasonable manner. And I, I also do agree that, you know, over the history of the town, in the 60s, I knew that we were fighting for why not to get the street widened, not to allow the state to do that. And it has been stopped before. I can't give you all the details. But I do think that our city is probably notorious enough to make quite a flap, to put it, you know, have a really strong statement. So, thank you.
Thank you.
My name is David Delabadia. I live at 213 Manor Circle, and my house backs up to Ethan Allen, actually has an address, 216 Ethan Allen. I've lived here for 38 years, and I stood next to Sam Abbott, and we stopped this widening of the road in the middle 70s, because they built something called the Metro. And the state at that time thought they owned the road, and they said, well, we need a three-lane highway to get people to the metro stop. And Sam and a bunch of those long-haired hippie types got together and, and made enough noise that they actually, we actually got it stopped. And the council then wasn't really as far on our side as you might think. Today, you guys are awesome. You really see the situation as it is, and I'm certainly glad to see that. When we were fighting the, the state at that time, it felt like we were in a fire-sign theater skit, and the railroad was coming. The, Sam was a real tough guy, you know? He, he made it to mayor here. I'm sure that, you know, you've met him, I guess, you've been here a long time. Anyway, maybe in a, on a different subject here a little bit, I heard, or maybe dreamed, that the section of highway that runs, of 410 that runs from Riggs Road to New Hampshire is going to be restored, widened, or they're going to make some improvements to it. And I don't think that they're going to make those improvements just to have a dead end to a two-lane road at, when it hits New Hampshire. So there's going to be some issues in the future to force the issue of widening the road through Tacoma Park. I don't think any of us want to see that. It's just the same old issue, more traffic, more pollution, more headaches, more noise. So I'm, I'm with you guys. I don't want to see it widened, and I don't want to see us give up control of it. And I think that we're on the right track. One thing that someone else brought up about contractors that work in the roads, maybe we should make sure that there's some sort of a major bond that lasts for a year. You cut a hole in that road, you got to make sure it's right, and you got to stand behind it, or, or, and you have to have a bond to back you up for at least a year, because it does take a long time to fix something right, and these guys want to get in, get out, and collect the money. And I have one question that maybe Mr. Peterson can ask. Do we have the right, since we own this road, to restrict the size of the truck traffic that travels on it?
That's something that your lawyer probably would have to discuss.
But that is a possibility that we may, because, because we, you badge it, but we own it.
If it's a state highway, I know what the restrictions are. I'm not sure I know if it's local or if nearby.
Well, maybe we should look into that at some point, and maybe could reduce the wear and tear on the road by cutting the size of the trucks. Then there's also EZ Pass, and we could make it a hot lane, and that would cut down some lanes right there. And maybe we shouldn't fix it, because the speed camera doesn't catch many people the way it is now. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Stephen Kramer, Michelle Rosenfield, Lorraine Pierceall, Jody...
Try that again?
Stephen Kramer, Michelle Rosenfield, Lorraine Pierceall, and Jody... I'm not, I can't read the writing. Starts with a P, I think, at 204 Philadelphia. Stephen Kramer still here? Okay. Then Michelle Rosenfield still here? I'm not, is that yes?
Michelle Rosenfeld, Landes Attorney for Historic, Historic Tacoma. Some have asked if the city conveys its property to S.H.A., will the city lose influence over future efforts to widen 410? The answer is yes, for several reasons. First, the state has legal authority to condemn city property. But legal authority and political will are two different things. As former legal counsel to the Montgomery County Planning Board, I know this firsthand. As long as the city owns land, it can object to condemnation proceedings. If it does, S.H.A. may well forego widening, road widening, rather than pursue condemnation against an unwilling city. But if the city conveys its land to S.H.A., this opportunity will be gone. Second, some people have suggested that county council or planning board supermajority voting requirements might afford protection to city residents. Some zoning and re-subdivision cases do require certain supermajority votes, but a state road project does not. In fact, the planning board's role is limited to a mandatory referral hearing, where the board can only offer non-binding recommendations to S.H.A. City negotiations to protect its ownership interest would offer far more direct influence over any future widening proposals. Third, there appears to be a widely shared view that recommendations in the Tacoma Park master plan would limit S.H.A.'s actions. Not so. On the one hand, state law does prohibit state funding of a transportation project that does not conform to master plan recommendations. But on the other hand, S.H.A. can unilaterally override the master plan if it concludes that there are extraordinary circumstances and no feasible alternatives. S.H.A. did just that when it built a segment of the ICC in a non-master plan alignment through the middle of two Durwood communities. These neighborhoods did not have a city council with similar property interests to help advocate against that alignment as S.H.A. drew up its plans. Finally, some say that when S.H.A. takes apart of privately-owned property, the state must only pay for the land taken. That is not Maryland law. The owner also is entitled to severance damages, the decreased value of the land not taken. These damages often far exceed the amount paid for the land itself. In ICC condemnation cases in Durwood, S.H.A. omitted severance damages from its appraisals. Durwood residents had, Durwood residents had no city council to protect them. Here, if the city keeps ownership in 410, it will be able to advocate for itself and for those private property owners who will face the same condemnation proceedings. For these reasons, Historic Tacoma urges the city council never convey this land. The city's continued ownership represents significant leverage in protecting the collective interests of the city and its residents by retaining the city's voice and autonomy for years to come. Thank you.
Just before you start, the, after you, there's Judy or Jody Curtisen, or whatever the name is. Boy, another name I can't read, at 8009 Flower, and Cosar Talat, and that's the end of the list.
My name's Lorraine Pierceall. I live at 7708 Tacoma Avenue. I'm vice president of Historic Tacoma, and I'm currently the president of Montgomery Preservation. And I'm here tonight to urge you to never cede our road to the state. And I ask you, what would Sammy say? And I think Sammy would say the same thing. I heard a lot of talk tonight about what a major widening would require. It would require the endorsement of our county executive and our county council. Boy, does that make me feel safe right now. It also, of course, does require our district 20 reps, and we all love them, and we know them now, but who's going to represent this community 20 years from now? Because it really is our responsibility to look ahead that far and to worry about those people, just as the people who went before us worried about us and protected us. I'm really happy to hear that the state highway administration is pretty worried about our historic preservation protections. That's really great. And in fact, we heard tonight that it was virtually impossible for them to destroy our community because of them. And I do appreciate our protections, and we are so fortunate to have them. And, but I am an old activist, and I know that, hey, you know, I want as many protections as I possibly can have, because it's all about leverage, and that is extremely important. And owning that road is another piece of leverage against a very formidable power, who by the way, could, you know, still try to take our road, Historic District or not. We are on to the teeth, and why are we on to the teeth? Because we've been through so many battles that almost destroyed our community, and you guys need to remember that. That is, that is so very important. You know, I heard all kinds of things tonight, which is so darn confusing, and I am slow as well. And I was really hearing, I thought, that this road was designated a state highway, and that they really like to have the land, but it's more of a policy that they like to own the land underneath, but we really are designated state highway. And I want to point out that the, the state transportation law does say that, you know, they're supposed to repair state highways and maintain them in good condition. So I'm still pretty confused about who has responsibility for what. I do think the issue of policy versus law is extremely important, and there's a major gap between those two. And we must never forget that, because we activists understand that. You can change policy, it's a lot harder to change law. Okay? And I'd like to ask about documentation. We heard a lot about documentation. Has anybody seen documentation? Do we have the documentation of who owns our road? Because I really think we need to get that. We need to have it. And last, I'd like to say, I think we should consider whether it's really worth it to own our entire road and have control over the whole stretch. I think that is something worth considering. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Judy or Jody, who lives at 204 Philadelphia? Okay. Carter, somebody who lives at 8009 Flower?
Good evening. Thank you for holding us for. As you can see from my dress, that's where I live. And so I'm just going to put my two cents in that I appreciate an observation of Flower Avenue. Having followed the discussion all evening, I have to say the decoupling concept makes a lot of sense to me. I wouldn't want to be stuck in the middle of other people's concerns on other streets. But I do want to put my pitch in to basically say that Flower Avenue definitely needs some attention. And if anybody can do something to enhance the safety on that street, we would welcome it. The part about the sidewalks, I completely agree with. There's a lot of need to get improved sidewalks on the eastern side of Flower Avenue. And with that, I just appreciate you exploring this in further detail. I think a big point here is that 2016 seems an awfully long time to wait for the county to move on this thing. So with that in mind, I appreciate that it's getting attention now. I appreciate the fact that Mr. Peterson actually has some experience with Flower Avenue personally. So maybe he can appreciate what our needs are. And maybe there's a case to be made here that maybe the state would rather be rid of it and just make life easier for everybody so we can move along. Thank you.
Thank you.[700.42][700.42](Applause) If you can pronounce your name.
Sure. It's Koser Talat. And I live at 8010 Flower Avenue. And I also want to thank you for having us and for staying late so you could hear us give our saying. So we who live on Flower Avenue see cars speeding along on a regular basis. And it's quite a dangerous road. Pedestrians are hit on Flower Avenue. And there's a lot of pedestrians. Ward five is of course Ward in Filmore Park, because a lot of people who don't own cars and who use public transportation and therefore have to walk long distances. And it's almost impossible to walk the length of Flower Avenue from Carroll to Philadelphia without walking in the road, sorry, to Piney Branch, without walking in the road. So I think that transferring Flower Avenue to Filmore Park, putting in sidewalks on both sides, making it a walkable, safe street would be to the benefit of everybody, but especially people who live in Ward five who desperately need a safe street to walk on. Our children go to Roland Terrace, and so have to cross Flower Avenue in order to get there. And it would put our minds at ease as we contemplate our four-year-old going there next year, to have her have sidewalks to walk on when she goes to school. Thank you.
Thank you.[786.73][786.73](Applause) We have two more people signed up. Bob Patton and Jared, I'll say Weissman, I'm not sure.
Bob Patton from 7005 West Orland Avenue. From everything that I've heard tonight, I've learned a lot about the situation. And something that hasn't been said clearly is what I would like to say, to make sure, try to make sure that it's clear. I stopped bicycling on Ethan Allen to my job in Prince George's County because it wasn't safe. I haven't been on that road very often in any means. Actually, the last time I was there, I was on the bus. And it felt like the bus was going to come apart as it went down the road. And I think people here have testified as to the situation there. And I think that even the administrator would agree that because everybody's impression has been that that street belongs to the state, they have been responsible for all the permitting and everything, all the planning, all the cycling of repaving, all the past work whenever it was done, all went through the state in some way, was either done by the state or approved by the state. I believe that no matter what, the state needs to bring that road up to being a safe and passable road, needs to pay for it being repaved, because they're responsible for it, whether or not the technicalities of ownership that have now come to light, you know, suggest that. So I think just from the point of view of making the history clean, I would like to see the city retain its ownership, to take ownership of its portions in good condition. And from here forward, then we're responsible to keep it in good shape. But I really think that section on Ethan Allen needs to be fixed before something worse happens than has already happened. Thank you.
Thank you.[914.12][914.12](Applause) And finally, Jared Weissman.
Sorry about my handwriting. My name's actually Jacob Weissman. And I can think without a doubt, I can probably say without a doubt that I'm probably the youngest person in this room today. And I've lived in Tacoma Park for about 21 years this December. And I've got to say, it's been a privilege to live in such a wonderful local neighborhood community. And I've had many eventful memories here. I've had the fortunate past of being with several wonderful activists in this community who have basically stood up for their fellow individuals. And it's been a real privilege. And it's been a privilege listening to people who care about their community and have to come out here tonight and just stand up in front of their council and just fight for something that they believe in. And it also feels good knowing that we have the support of the council behind us, too. And I've come up here, I came here tonight wondering what was going to be said, just wondering what the opinions of people were going to be. And I knew I was going to hear, I knew that I was going to hear protests from our local citizens, because that's basically the essence of Tacoma Park.[1005.12][1005.12](Laughter) And it really does make me feel proud to live in such an upright community. And in all honesty, I appreciate, especially Josh Roy, I appreciate everybody's just trying to get down to the basics of what the whole 410 issue is. And it's, I have to say that I appreciate everybody just trying to get a short, concise, direct answer. And in all honesty, we can talk about policies, we can talk about lawmaking back and forth, but until we actually get something established that says that this is what's going to happen as a definite response, I really don't know what's going to happen. And I think a lot of other people could say that, too. And we can talk about, again, we can talk about laws and policies. But as individuals who live in this city and who basically take part in the daily activities, we really have the power and the ability to do so ourselves. And it's people that make laws and policies. It's people that make changes and make a difference in everyday life. And unless we, as the citizens of Tacoma Park, stand up to try and make a change or make a difference, it's not going to happen. So thank you.[1075.33][1075.33](Applause)
Thank you very much. And I think that's a fitting end to the public comments. And I really appreciate your comments.
Great.
If I can just try and say what I think I hear us heading for and see if I have agreement from my colleagues, and I know Councilmember Clay has a comment as well. I'll say first that I still didn't hear anybody talk about 195. I guess we'll just have to assume that whatever goes for 410 goes for 195. Do I hear any disagreement with that?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. That we want to decouple the conversations so that we can go forward with annexing, the process for setting up the annexing of the portion of Flower Avenue that is currently in unincorporated Montgomery County, that we've heard some interesting possibilities and that we want to pursue those and get some further information and chew this over a little bit more. We've got a little time to do that. The State Highway Administrator said we have some time to go over this and see how we want to deal with this. And that's what I hear. And I think that we have not had a proposal on the table as yet. We've had the possibility of a proposal, that language isn't on the table. It has not gone onto the table. So I don't think we have to deal with that one tonight. I think it just needs more work. Councilmember Clay?
Well, I think I got a lot of answers to the questions that I had. As some of you may be aware, last week, when this came up for a final vote, I asked the other council members to hold off if it wasn't an absolute urgency that we had to do it right then. Because, like I said in the emails that I put out and what I said earlier today, this issue, this issue as a road swap is really relatively recent. And so I still hear people saying they feel like they were left out, or they weren't included, or they only got their notices by Historic Tacoma. But I know that the city sent out notices this week. There was certainly active traffic on the Ward two listservs about it, including a notice from the mayor and from our state delegate, Heather Missouri, who noted that she came, was coming to the meeting tonight. And I appreciate that. You know, to me, the big deal is about the permitting control. Because as I said last week, when we were ready to vote on this, you know, it doesn't make sense to me to give the road to the state if we don't have an effective way to maintain permitting. And I said at the time, if we found an effective way to partner with a joint powers agreement or something, that would be okay with me. But I was actually really excited again tonight, like I was excited when I heard we owned the road originally. I was excited to hear tonight that we do, in fact, control permitting over the areas that we own and do, in fact, control things that are of interest to the folks, I think more in Ward one, which is like the guardrail issues, if that sounds right to our Ward one council member down there, as well as, I think, a whole slew of pedestrian safety issues that are prevalent around the Elm-Ethan Allen intersection and then around the areas of the library and the school that are closer into the Ward one area. I would like to say, I think we should discuss the 195 section, not because I'm hot to give it away to the state, because it's a different issue. It's not a widening risk. And we heard tonight that they might not plow 410 if we own it, which would be kind of silly, because they'd be driving along the street and then they have to pick up their plows while they were driving along there. So they didn't plow that part of the road that they didn't own and then pick them back down and go out the other side of the state. But, I mean, that becomes even more ridiculous for the 195 area, which is, I don't know, 10 houses long or something. So I think we have to have an extended conversation about it. But I would like to at least discuss it. And a couple of other things. I think we still need a clearer definition about the ownership by S.H.A. versus the control versus the right of way, which I think you answered in ways that I understood earlier. But I bet a lot of people here still had a lot of unclear, there was a lack of clarity in that. And I think it probably because it needs to be answered by the state attorney general and not by the head of the S.H.A. I do want to say that Historic Tacoma Land Use Attorney Advisor was correct in that although the federal law does not allow, does not require a payment for diminished value of land under a partial taking, Maryland law does currently allow for such payment. And when I put out that email, I should have said that that was about the federal law and not the Maryland law. And that was a mistake on my part. And the last thing I want to say is that, yeah, I repeated that the whole road widening issue is so emotional for people. But to me, what's really important is what happens with the road and how we manage it. I still think that the political motivation to widen 410 would have to be so great as to negate the usefulness of the city objecting to condemnation as a barrier to road widening. I don't really think it's significant. But to some extent, I'm not sure that matters, because I really still think the bigger issue is how we control it. It's related to the permitting and the public safety issues. And I think that in the end, that's what it's going to come down to. Thank you.
Councilmember Wright?
First, I want to say thank you to you, Neil. I think we actually all owe you a round of applause.[1433.61][1433.61](Applause) On a number of occasions, I've had, been up here and had representatives from different levels of government up here before us. And I appreciate your candor, honesty, and patience a great deal. I want to thank Tom, Heather, and Jamie for being here and helping us work on this issue up to this point. And I look forward to continuing to work on the issue. I think there is the potential to have the city get Flower. I think it would be okay to give away the Carroll Avenue. And maybe that's the road swap that helps you with your precedent, shall we say. And that I think there, again, is a way to figure out getting funds to have the city retain ownership, but still get the repairs that are needed to Ethan Allen. I do think we need to solidify what the ownership is and codify that in writing. I know, I didn't live here, but many years ago, there was a verbal agreement between the city around the metro site. And we can't find that agreement now. So I think to make it very clear what that legal agreement is would be very helpful. And then, even if we don't change anything, we have to figure out some sort of shared maintenance, because Colleen's correct. Snow plowing wouldn't happen properly on roads. And as we know, from last winter storms and what they say about global warming, those events are going to happen even more often. So and then lastly...
Let's pray they don't.
What's that?
Let's pray they don't.[1536.83][1536.83](Laughter)
I think unfortunately, we're in for that. Lastly, I think this is an incredible reminder about making sure you have and proactively seek out as much community input as possible. Silence isn't always mean okay from the community. And I thank Colleen for reminding us to take a breather and not vote on this last week and get more involvement.[1563.83][1563.83](Applause) And again, I apologize for what I would consider my own error in judgment about the seriousness of this issue and that I should have proactively reached out to the community about it and that it being on the agenda a number of times, you know, isn't enough. So, thank you.
Councilmember Robinson?
Thank you for those words, Josh. I'm in line with a lot of the things you say about how we approach the public and educate all of us as we ponder on difficult issues like this. Mr. Peterson, you said at one point that if we kept 410, you'd want to have a clause in there saying that we could give it to you if we wanted later on. I can understand where you're coming from on that one. But the maintenance is the big issue. And I hope that you don't take the million dollars and use it somewhere else, but rather that we do find a way to support 410, which has a lot of non-local traffic on it and which is, if it continues, I assume it'll continue to be a state highway, at least in name, that we can use the state resources to help us maintain it. And I think we can do, have a good partnership, I bet we can, on the maintenance issues. So thanks for coming.
Councilwoman Simmons?
Thank you, Mayor. Again, I'd be brief, just one question. And it looks like we may be thinking about not selling the roadway to the state. But I wonder, we're basing this on the fact that we own it now. And sometime downstream in the future, there may be a discussion about who owns it again. Because I think government memories are kind of weak sometimes. And so I wonder what kind of evidence we have that we do own it at this point. And is there something to strengthen that so that we don't have to argue about it 20 years from now?
I think it'd be a very good idea for us to try to memorialize in whatever legal instrument we can the ownership issue. So I think that's a very good suggestion.
I mean, we're predating decisions on that basis. And yet, I agree, we need to make it very firm so that downstream, we don't have to go through this agony again. Thank you.
I was looking online for more evidence today of who owned the road, because we hadn't seen it. I noted that in the Montgomery County side, like in Bethesda, there were actually plat maps online that said what the state owned and what the county owned and what the ownership was like. I couldn't find anything for the parts that had been Prince George's formerly or the area over there of Philadelphia. So I'm sure that would be a place to look. But they're maybe not online.
Generally, when we have constructed a roadway or when we have reconstructed a roadway to become a state highway, we create plaits and they're a matter of public record. Because this section of 410 was never reconstructed by the then State Roads Commission, but basically just connected into what were existing city streets. They basically are city streets because they were city streets. Actually, the date I was given was sometime... Actually, the date I was given was sometime in the 1930s.
So maybe we own as much of it as we want to.
I would just suggest that the council should direct the staff to get the proper documentation. Thank you.
Councilmember Snipper?
I also want to thank you for spending many hours here, and I will try to keep this brief so it isn't too much longer. There is one thing I didn't say and was pretty clear here tonight. The residents of Ward five, that's the ward that parallels Flower Avenue, along Flower Avenue overwhelmingly support obtaining Flower Avenue. And although some of those folks were here tonight, a number of them could not be here. So I want to be clear about that. And the other is, I do think that the discussion tonight and the information you have provided makes it possible for us to move forward on some kind of decoupling or some similar arrangement that would allow us to go forward with Flower Avenue and then figure out what we need to do with 410 going forward. And of course, I do also want to put in my plug that working on an arrangement to maintain 410 going forward is absolutely essential. Thank you.
And I wanted to just make a quick note that one thing I jotted down as Kathy Breckbill was talking, was she had a question about why there weren't sidewalks on two sides of Ethan Allen. And my recollection is because there wasn't sufficient right of way on the second side. When the state put sidewalks in less than 10 years ago, that was explored and there just wasn't room. And I just want to say finally, again, thank you very much for coming and helping us get through this. It was very instructive to get new information, clarification of old information. And I think we all have a much better sense of what we need to do going forward, and really appreciate your efforts to help us along. And also to Kate Mazara and to Delicate Mazir and her staff, and Delicate Hucker, who was here the whole evening, and really appreciate your help and input as well. And Senator Raskin, and all of you folks who came. And I agree with Councilmember Wright, we always have to remember that even if we've had many agenda items on something, that silence isn't necessarily agreement, and that we need to make sure that we always reach out to residents and to organizations who have a stake in things here, and make sure that we get all of that input for the best decision. And I think this process will do that. Thanks very much. And we actually have two more very short items to do before we finish this evening.
You can't leave if we can't.
The next item is a second reading ordinance demanding to go apart code to repeal obsolete sections, and I believe Councilmember Wright wants to remove that from the agenda?
I would propose tabling that, moving it back. And my reason for that is my understanding is that the city attorney hasn't reviewed all of the changes to that code. Is that correct, Sue? And I feel very uncomfortable voting on that. I feel uncomfortable enough as it is, because I feel like there's lots of things in there I don't fully understand, and that there might be unintended consequences of removing some of those. And I also feel uncomfortable with changing the major legal document for the city without the city attorney reviewing it, so.
So I guess technically, it's not on the table this evening, because it hasn't been moved this evening. So I think we'll just strike that from the agenda, and we'll put that back on. So then we'll move to the next and final item, which is the second reading ordinance approving a pilot agreement with Montgomery Housing Partnership for the Edinburgh House. Does somebody like to move that?
Move second.
Any council, it's been moved and seconded by Councilmember Snipper and Councilmember Wright. Any comments on that one? Any public comments?
I think that Councilmember Simmons seconded it.
Councilmember Snipper moved, and Councilmember Simmons seconded.
Now, who was Councilmember Wright?
The what?
Yeah.
Yes. All right.
Could we move on, please?
There's no council comment. Is there any public comment? This is a second reading ordinance. We'll record, please call the rule.
Mayor Williams?
Aye.
Councilmember Wright?
Aye.
Councilmember Clay?
Nay.
Councilmember Robinson?
Nay.
Councilmember Simmons?
Aye.
Councilmember Snipper?
Aye.
Councilmember Schultz?
Aye.
Okay, that passes final two. We are adjourned for the evening, thank you.